We will now begin the Boynton Beach City Commissioners Meeting today, Tuesday, May 15, 2018, at 6:30 PM. Would everyone please rise for an invocation led by Commissioner McCray, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Steven Grant.
Here.
Vice Mayor Christina Romulus.
Present.
Commissioner Justin Katz is absent.
He'll be late.
He'll be late, okay? Commissioner Mac McCray.
Here.
Commissioner Joe Casello.
Here.
There is a quorum.
All right, thank you. May I have any additions, leations, or corrections to the agenda? The only thing that I saw is that Item 6C, approve the plat. I was thinking that we might approve the master plan and site plan first before we replat it. Is that okay if we move that item afterwards? I got a head nod from the lawyer saying that's okay.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. He says it's okay, it's okay.
All right, so may I have a motion to approve as amended?
I'm moved.
Second.
All right, all those in favor state so by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, agenda is approved unanimously. May I have informational items by the City Commissioners? Commissioner McCray, would you like to begin?
All right. Let me go ahead and get the gripe off my chest first tonight. On my way down here, before I got here, on Channel 5 tonight, it made a statement that Boynton was getting a town square at the expense of the theater group. That is totally wrong. We tried to work with Peter and his group to make sure that we could find a space here in Boynton, which we was not able to find space. And when the theater group came to Boynton, it was out on a year-to-year lease. And I found that was kind of disturbing tonight when I seen that on the 6 o'clock news. I'd like to start off by telling staff thank you, unless talk trash. It's in Creole and Spanish now. Thank you, that was one of my requests. Also, I've got a few announcements. The TPA will be meeting Thursday at 9:00 AM at the Intracoastal Park Clubhouse. That's here in Boynton. In Boynton, we are the hosts. Okay, also, on the 31st of this month, the Palm Beach County Criminal Justice Commission, Community Engagement Task Force, will be meeting at the St. John Missionary Baptist Church, 900 North Seacrest Boulevard, where Reverend Dr. Javon T. Davis is the senior pastor. I'm going to pass this flyer down and ask Lori if she could make some more copies. I would be meeting with the group that said they want to see a better hood in Boynton. And if she could bring some of these copies to our meeting, that would be doing on Monday. Also, I attended the TPA meeting, which was very instrumental. And it was like a class that we had like for three hours. Very informative and very productive. Glad I was there. I went to the community church here in Boynton and attended their 13th anniversary service. Also, I'd like to say that as I look at an audience, I see one of my classmates. She was bad in school, just like I was, and I promised her tonight I'd be good. Thank you. That's it, sir.
All right, thank you. Vice Mayor?
I attended, along with the mayor. One of our local churches here was celebrating the teachers in our lives, so I wanted to thank the Church of Latter Day Saints, I believe it was the organization that put that on. And it was a celebration of over 60 teachers in Palm Beach County, that their students nominate them to just be recognized. Fancy dinner. And as a teacher myself, it's always great to have individuals just say thank you and let us know that it's worth it outside of the dollars that we get paid. It's way worth it, and we are making an impact and we are changing lives. So happy Belated Teachers Week to any of you all who have taught and changed a life with your profession. In addition to that, I know we're a couple days removed, but also happy Mother's Day. I see a lot of mothers, future mothers, grandmothers in the audience, so I thank you. I lost my mom a few years ago, so Mother's Day is always a little bittersweet for me. But happy Mother's Day to all of you.
Commissioner Casello?
No disclosures, Mayor.
All right. I'll begin on May 2nd. I, along with the Greater Boynton Beach Sister Cities and a few delegates from the Palm Beach County School District, went to Haiti. It was an amazing and informative trip to learn what our sister city is doing over in La Caie, Haiti. It was a vast difference from Finland. And I think that there's a lot of work that we can do with our sister city to help better Boynton Beach and La Caie. In addition to visiting La Caie, I met the mayors of Petronville, Jacmel, and Carrefour, and met with the ambassador of Taiwan on Monday, the 7th. When I got back into Boynton Beach, I attended Bethesda Hospital's Shadow and Nurse Program. I was in the ICU for three hours, doing critical care. It's, you know, I'm very happy that we have a hospital in Boynton Beach. In case anybody needs an emergency, we have somewhere to go that is close by. And on the 9th, I was there again for the nurses' breakfast. So Bethesda had the Nurses' Week because, you know, you deal with the nurses 90% of the time when you're in a hospital, and with their empathy is what really makes a difference for speedy recovery. Afterwards, I went to Northwest 6th Avenue in Seacrest to see that the Boynton Beach Garden Club is planting. And I'm speaking with the CRA to hopefully create a community vegetable garden on the tax deed property they just bought. That afternoon, I met with Trina, with Trainovations, talking about our strategic initiatives of branding a better Boynton Beach, building wealth in the community, redevelopment of town square, and transportation and mobility. On the 11th, I was asked to join Hal Valache, Steve Abrams, and Nick Urin to be the delegates from Palm Beach County to ride on Brightline's first trip from Palm Beach County to Miami. On the 19th and 20th, they have discounted fares for everybody if they're still available. It was an amazing trip. I would do it again just for the being on the train. It took us hour and 15 minutes from West Palm Beach to Miami and an hour and 15 minutes on the way back. You can't really get that sort of consistency when going to Miami otherwise. On the 13th, I celebrated Mother's Day, and it was very nice. My mother came down, and I was with my grandmother, and we celebrated a nice day together. On the 14th, I met with New Era Prep and Bonnie Miskel, who is representing, I believe, Cortina tonight. Is there anything other informational items? Yes?
Sorry, two other items. Also on the news, it was stating about the train horns here in Boynton for Brightline that's going to be done during the summer. So please, any of my constituents and anybody else up here, it's going to be doing it during the summer. Also, before I went to work Saturday morning, I went by Habitat, and they had a Women Can Build. I had never been so amazed to see so many women being productive construction workers. And I just want to tell Habitat, thank you, and continue to keep up the good work. Mo and his staff is doing an excellent job here in Boynton, not only in District 2, but also throughout our city. Thank you.
Commissioner Casello?
Yeah, just a point of information, Mayor. I've been getting a few calls about the, there was some signage up at the end of Minor Road where it dead ends into Lawrence. And the signage said, "Vote for the extension of Minor Road going all the way towards Military." I inquired, the city has no knowledge of any extension planned. I called the county, the county has nothing in the foreseeable future to extend that road. So if you get the word out, if anybody asks you, the Minor Road is not going to be extended. There's nothing on, it's on a paper road, but nothing in the near future to extend that road. Thank you.
Moving on to announcements, we have presentation of the annual Bob Barovi Student-Citizen of the Year Award by members of the Education and Youth Advisory Board.
Good evening, members of the audience and board. My name is Dr. Tiffany North, and I'm the president of the Advisory Board on Children and Youth, Ward for the City of Boynton Beach. And we'd like to present the 2018 Bob Barovi Student-Citizen of the Year Award. Just to give you a little background about the award, this was created in 2000 to recognize a graduating high school senior who best epitomizes the spirit of volunteerism and giving to the community exemplified by the late Bob Barovi. A United States veteran and former advisory board on children and youth, Mr. Barovi was an active citizen of the Boynton Beach community for many years. High school seniors write an essay on what they have learned from performing volunteer community service and provide three letters of recommendation. The winner must be of good moral character, have done significant volunteer work, and made significant contributions to his or her community. The award is funded through donations secured by the Education and Youth Advisory Board. The winner is selected by a panel of judges, including last year's winner. This year's Bob Barovi Student-Citizen of the Year, who will receive $1,000 cash reward and have her name placed on the permanent plaque displayed at City Hall, is Elena Thomas, who will graduate from Santa Lucia's High School with a 4.49 GPA and over 1,300 hours of community service. So just to tell you a little about this fantastic young lady here, she's described by her school counselor and teachers as intelligent, perseverant, goal-oriented, independent, and determined, but with a humble spirit. Elena sought out a school where she could obtain both a rigorous academic curriculum and career exploration through the Criminal Justice Academy. As a student, she has excelled academically, succeeding in her honors APN dual enrollment courses. Elena currently ranks 15 in her class of 586 seniors with a weighted GPA of 4.49. Her excellent academic performance has afforded her membership in the National Honor Society, the Triumph Music Honor Society, the Rogue Kappa Social Studies Honor Society, and the Phi Theta Kappa Honor Society at Palm Beach State College, just to name a few. With an avid interest in music, Elena was also a member of the Chiefs marching and concert bands, where she led as master sergeant and woodwind section leader. Recognized for her tenacity and practical leadership skills, Elena has held the rank of corporal and sergeant for the Criminal Justice Class of 2018. At the culmination of her junior year, she was selected by the Palm Beach County Sheriff's Department to be the lieutenant executive officer of the Criminal Justice Academy for the 2017-2018 school year. While in her current position, she has been awarded Cadet of the Year for outstanding leadership by the Palm Beach County Sheriff's Department and Career and Technical Education Student of the Year by the Palm Beach County School District. Believing in serving others, Elena chose to volunteer with the Palm Beach County Youth Court Program, where she has served as lead youth attorney volunteer since the 9th grade. She is tasked with mentoring, defending, and prosecuting youth to deter them from entering the formal justice system. Elena has provided a phenomenal 1,335 hours of community service throughout Palm Beach County. She is a member of the Education and Youth Advisory Board, member of the Empower Leadership Academy for Girls, and the Criminal Justice Honor Guard. She is active in her church, where she volunteers in the technology and nursery ministries. And she also tutors at Risk Youth at a local elementary school during the summer. Elena will attend Howard University in Washington, DC. Oh, okay. Majoring in Administration of Justice with a minor in Psychology. So congratulations, you definitely put in a lot of work, and we definitely want to award you for it.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Well, first off, I would like to thank the Youth Advisory Board for awarding me this scholarship. My name is Alana Simone Thomas. I will be graduating actually tomorrow at 8:00 in the morning. It was always instilled in me and my family that giving back to your community first before receiving is a much more rewarding feeling than when receiving something as a reward. I take pride in serving my community, especially growing up in Boynton Beach for all of my life, for 18 years. And I would hope to inspire future generations to do what I do. So thank you.
Elena? Is it Elena?
Elena.
Elena? What will you be studying?
Administration of Justice.
Administration of Justice, okay.
With a minor in Psychology.
Would Wayne, is he here?
He's here.
Yep. Oh, he's wearing a tie and everything, wow. City Boynton Beach proclamation. Whereas despite advances in medical technology and research, men continue to live an average of five years less than women, and with Native American, African-American men having the lowest life expectancy. And whereas educating the public and healthcare providers about the importance of a healthy lifestyle and early detection of male health problems will result in reducing rates of mortality from disease. And whereas men who are educated about the value of preventive health will be more likely to participate in health screening, and fathers who maintain a healthy lifestyle are role models for their children and have happier, healthier children. And whereas Men's Health Network worked with Congress to develop National Men's Health Week as a special campaign to help educated men and their family about their importance of positive health attitudes and preventive health practices. And whereas the City of Boynton Beach Men's Health Week will focus on a broad range of men's health issues, including heart disease, mental health, diabetes, prostate, testicular, and colon cancer. And whereas the citizens of this city are encouraged to increase awareness of the importance of a healthy lifestyle, regular exercise, and medical checkups. Now therefore, I, Steven B. Grant, Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, to hereby proclaim June 2018 as Men's Health Month. Do you have a few words? Or let's take a picture first. Hey, which way, Parks and Rec, what are we doing?
Good evening, everybody. I'm a little nervous. I've currently been with the City of Boynton Beach for six months now, and I've been with fitness my entire life. I'm just thrilled to be here and be part of the health and fitness movement. We currently got a lot of equipment over here at the Hester Gym, and I'd love everybody to go over there and check it out. It's a great facility, and this city is going to be better.
What are the hours?
The hours? I do not know the hours.
All right. Well, you'll let it, everybody will know.
Yes.
For June.
Yes.
All right, thank you so much. You got a ticket?
Thank you.
Eric, excuse me, before we go any further, it'd be robbery, I'm just saying, if we do not recognize Elana's parents and grandparents in the audience, if you all will please stand, I'm just saying, you know, let her know that she came from good stock. Thank you.
Next, we have, if Wyena Dunmire can come down for National Gun Violence Awareness Day.
Ms. Dunmire, looks like you brought a lot cuter models this time. A lot more cute models.
City of Boynton Beach proclamation. Whereas the first Friday in June has been proclaimed National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the City of Boynton Beach to honor and remember all victims and survivors of gun violence, and to declare that we, as a country, must do more to reduce gun violence. And whereas every day, 96 Americans are killed by gun violence, and on average, there are nearly 13,000 gun homicides every year. And Americans are two times more likely to be killed with guns than people in other developed countries. And whereas protecting public safety in the communities they serve is a mayor's highest responsibility, and support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand in hand with keeping guns away from dangerous people. And mayors and law enforcement officers know their communities best and are the most familiar with local criminal activity and how to address it, and are best positioned to understand how to keep their citizens safe. And whereas anyone may join the campaign by pledging to wear orange on June 1st to help raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors, and renew our commitment to reduce gun violence, and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands, and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our children safe. Now therefore, I, Steven B. Grant, Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, to hereby proclaim the first day of June 2018 as National Gun Violence Awareness Day.
My name is Miriam Lang, and I'm here as a volunteer with Moms Demand Action for Gunsense in America, the Central Palm Beach County. Thank you all for recognizing and supporting gun violence awareness. On Saturday, June 2nd, we will be honoring the lives of victims and survivors of gun violence with a Wear Orange National Gun Violence Awareness Day event. The Wear Orange event will be held on Saturday, June 2nd, at Meadows Park in Boynton Beach from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM. It's a public event with family-friendly activities. We call this day Wear Orange because of a young girl named Hadia Pendleton, who was shot and killed in 2013, just one week after performing at President Obama's second inaugural parade. She was only 15 years old. After her death, her friends asked us to stand up, speak out, and wear orange to raise awareness about gun violence. Orange is the color hunters wear to protect themselves from being shot while out hunting. Orange also expresses our collective hope as a nation, a hope for a future free from gun violence. Large mass shootings may make the most news, but tragically, American families are devastated by gun violence every single day. And that's why we work hard to address gun violence in all its forms, including day-to-day gun violence, unintentional shootings, and gun suicides. Just a few statistics. Since 2013, there have been more than 300 school shootings in America, which is an average of about one a week. Black men are 13 times more likely than non-Hispanic white men to be shot and killed with guns. And black Americans only make up 14% of the US population. At least 52% of American women killed with guns are killed by intimate partners or family members. When a gun is present in a domestic violence situation, the woman is five times more likely to be killed. 21,000 Americans die by gun suicide each year, and American children are 11 times more likely to die by gun suicide than their peers in other high-income countries. Please join us on June 2nd at Meadows Park in Boynton Beach. Come out at 10:00 AM. Enjoy the community event with your family. Spread the word to your friends, your coworkers, your neighbors. Be sure to wear orange. Remember, orange symbolizes the value of human life and reminds us that we are united by our shared hope that we can create a safer country for all Americans and not just some. To join the Fourth Annual National Gun Violence Awareness Day and Wear Orange, you can visit wearorange.org, and you can sign up in RSVP to come to the event. Thank you again.
Next, we have an announce, the Solid Waste Division will be having Tire Amnesty Week.
Andrew Mack, Director of Public Works and Engineering, excited to announce that the Solid Waste Division will have its annual Tire Amnesty Week coming up on June 4th through June 8th, which means that you'll be able to dispose of those car tires at your house that you've been hoarding for a little while. And if you put up to eight out by the curb, they'll be picked up on your normal bulk trash days. Just make sure that they're within three feet away, three feet away from a garbage cart or any other fixtures or mailboxes, and make sure that you keep them separated from vegetation. If you have any questions, or you can call the Solid Waste Division at Public Works at 561-742-6200. And we're there from Monday through Friday, 7:30 to 4:30 PM.
Mr. Mack, how are we notifying the public? I'm just saying, those that are not at the meeting tonight, the newspaper or what?
We're using the social media. Eleanor, we did a public PSA announcement with Davison Moniston, our new solid waste manager, and we're also posting flyers around the city hall.
All right, if you could send me a copy of that posting with new public work, the guy that's over at Solid Waste, appreciate it.
I believe it's on our city website, Eleanor?
It's on our city, it's on our board.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Andrew, I know that during last year's Hurricane Irma, a lot of people were looking for information regarding our Solid Waste Division. Is there, I guess, a newsletter or something, or I guess, email that people can give to the Solid Waste Division so that they can get updates like this?
Right now, we don't have that, but there's something that we're working on as part of our routeware software, so we're looking into doing something like that.
Okay. Eleanor, you have to come down.
What Eleanor is going to say is there's flyers in the back of the...
Okay.
... for the hurricane and the tire amnesty, and these are the ones that we just did in Spanish.
All right, and so moving on to the next announcement?
Yes, sir. Again, hurricane season starts June 1st, and we're asking our residents to do their part and to conduct their tree trimming early in preparation for hurricane season. This is a definitely valuable effort on their parts. As, you know, if we wait till the last minute and do the tree trimming, the Solid Waste Division can't guarantee that we'll get it all up before the storm. So we're asking that residents to go out and do their tree trimming early, early as possible, before there's a named storm out there. Hopefully, knock on wood, we don't have any storms this year. And when you're doing that, just make sure that you cut your vegetation into lengths four foot and four inch diameter. Make sure they're placed along the roadside, sorry, three foot, no obstructions, round mailbox or poles. And make sure that it's separated from bulk trash. And make sure we don't mix any other debris with the vegetation as well. And large tree stumps and trunks will, greater than four inches, require a special pickup. And again, you can call the Solid Waste Division of Public Works at 561-742-6200. And we're open Monday through Friday, 7:30 to 4:30 PM. If you have any questions?
There's stumps larger than four inches?
Four inches in diameter, yes. Stumps or trunks?
Andrew, if you could also comment on FPL can be a partner with residents to help clear tree branches away from power lines, and that's something that we can also help in preempt, you know, in terms of downed power lines during storms, if we just take care of those sooner rather than later.
Right.
I guess I gave the announcement myself, didn't I?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. And then our last announcement...
And then our last announcement is that we are having a public input budget workshop Tuesday, May 29th, 2018, at 6:30 p.m. at Intracoastal Park Clubhouse. This meeting is so that we can, as the commission, get input from the public, what they would like to see in the 2018-19 fiscal year, because we have our budget hearings in July. And so unless we plan what we want to see in those July hearings, we can't, it's better that we do it early. And now that we have Commissioner Justin Katz who has arrived, do you have any informational items to share?
Yeah, I met with J. Cam developers, and that's it. I did want to ask the board, I recollect us setting the time for that budget workshop at 5:00 p.m., but in the agenda it says 6:30. I don't know if we can confirm what the actual time that was discussed was, but I feel like it was 5:00 o'clock.
I thought it was always 6:30 because that's when all our meetings are.
It's up to the board, whatever you want to do.
I'm fine with 6:30.
I'm fine with 6:30. That would give work and individuals time to get home, shower, and get to the meeting.
All right.
Shower.
Yeah, shower, yeah.
That's very important.
Yep.
All right.
Okay.
Now, we will open for public audience. Individual speakers will be limited to three-minute presentations. Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm coming because I was reading the story that's the first thing on your packet in last Sunday's Palm Beach Post, Alexandra, shout out. Jupiter's looking to propose a ban on plastic straws, and I've been on a bit of a Styrofoam binge lately, so I'm thinking, why not kill two birds with one stone? We should be a very progressive city, and I say this regularly on stuff like this. And this is an easy fix. In this packet, you will find the news article that was in last Sunday's paper, in case you didn't see it, information on debris items found in the oceans, how long it takes to decompose, and you will see plastic stuff takes ages and ages. The third page is that really sad pathetic little seahorse who had, was wrapped around a Q-tip in the Indian Ocean. Styrofoam laws that come from surfrider.org, they're actually tracking all the cities and all the states that are getting rid of Styrofoam and banning it, and I just clipped out the Florida stuff, but you can go on there and see this stuff. California alone has 65 cities with ordinances banning Styrofoam. The backside shows part of an article from PSMAG Magazine, and it's talking about how cities around the nation are getting rid of Styrofoam. 10 Reasons From the State of Florida to Get Rid of Plastic Straws, information from the state of Florida about marine debris, and a nice story in the New York Times that is from just, what, a month and a half ago, list, talking about all the cities and all the countries that are getting rid of plastic straws. And I'm thinking this is something we should be moving forward on, so I'm asking you guys to move forward on this. I know Mayor Grant had brought up having some kind of green committee, and I don't even think you were done talking about it before I emailed you saying I wanted to be part of that. And I haven't heard anything, and I'm wondering, you know, what the status is of all of this. And I really think you guys should think about this. Jupiter's not the only one in South Florida doing something, and maybe we should be too. So I'm giving you information so you can think about it, so hopefully, one or more of you will bring this up, and let's put some ordinances on the books to get rid of Styrofoam and plastic straws.
Susan, what's the alternative to plastic straws?
There's actually several. One of these websites that's on here, you can use glass straws, paper straws, no straw, which is what they're actually proposing, metal straws. One of these companies has discounts if you go through their website to buy in bulk. A lot of the restaurants are just flat-out going no straw unless you ask. I know when I'm cleaning on Sundays, I'm cleaning up a ton of straws that blow away because even, you know, restaurants don't take care of stuff, and that's the reality. There's a lot of options, though. I was surprised. Ceramic, too, I think.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kevin Homer. I reside at 2505 Lake Drive North here in Boynton Beach. About a month ago, I was driving along Federal Highway and noticed a rainbow in the sky. I enjoyed taking photos and pulled over at Harvey Oyer Park, and I walked closer to the water's edge and noticed a ton of debris. I heard a voice behind me say, "Pretty sad, huh?" And this voice was Dean over at Paddle Waste Sports. We chatted for a few minutes. I suggested organizing a cleanup. Before I could finish, he said yes, and that's, and that he would donate a couple kayaks for the event. As I walked toward my car, I thought, what the heck was I getting into? My first call went to Wally and Roz over at Parks and Rec. They couldn't have been any more supportive in offering their time, knowledge, and materials for the event. I then called on an old sleepaway camp friend of mine who owns Sea Crest Recovery right down the street to offer his patients a sense of purpose in volunteering their time at the cleanup. I called Lowe's, who donated 30 buckets, Harbor Freight Tools, who gave 40 trash pickers. Then it was Carrabba's Frankie's Pizza, Fat Souflaki, and Sushi Joe, who graciously gave gift cards for cleanup raffle prizes. I'm here to let the public know about the Adopt the Park program through the city and my experience with it. It was awesome. In less than one hour, 53 of us collected more than 100 pounds of trash, mostly plastic. The news showed up and helped create additional awareness. This was so spectacular, but what really did it for me was when one of your city employees, Wayne Carols, who's here tonight, who was honored for something else, texted me Wednesday afternoon while I was in a meeting with a client of mine, Diagnostic Centers of America, with two offices here in Boynton Beach. The text I'm about to read was what caused, what was, what caused me to stop the meeting and is the driving force to DCA sponsoring Boynton Cares' next cleanup. The text went something like this. "Hey, Kevin, Wayne Carols here. Are you the person who adopted Intracoastal Park? I met you briefly." "Hi, Wayne from Minnesota?" "Yes." Wayne wrote, "Check this out. Wayne sent me a photo of the homeless people cleaning up cigarette butts. I called Wayne, and he said that the park cleanup created an energy which became contagious. The following day, I went back to the park and introduced myself to these same people and shared my appreciation. Children on the playground followed my lead, placing litter in garbage cans while their parents smiled and gave the thumbs up. On my way out, I spoke with Edward, who was homeless, and we talked about the importance of disposing waste properly. He then managed to draw some sort of parallel to his adult magazine, which he was very proud to show me. All kidding aside, during this cleanup, I hoped to touch one person, but it actually came full circle, as it was ultimately I who was touched in the end. Thanks to Wayne and everyone else who supported this effort to clean up Boynton Beach. Boynton Cares is not just for animals and for moms and children, but for the homeless people as well. They don't want to be homeless any more than each of us wants to be. As children, most of us were taught, when we borrow something, to return it in equal or better condition is when we took possession. Boynton Beach and its natural areas were here long before us, and hopefully, will be here long after our time passes. I challenge every one of you in here to remember this, whether you're an official, department head, manager, director, or member of the community. Wayne Carols gets it, and there will be many more to follow. Our cleanups take place the first Sunday of each month at 9:00 a.m. at Intracoastal Park, and we can be reached, liked, and followed at Boynton Cares on Facebook. And thanks for the extra time you've granted. Thank you. Thanks. Okay.
I'm going to, can I take a timeout for a second? I just want to thank the gentleman who just came up, and I also want to thank our city employee, Wayne, for being involved in the process. It's rare that we have members of the public come and actually give us good, good, good feeling stories like this. This is like heartwarming, you know? You're kind of pulling some heartstrings there. So I just appreciate you for your effort and for bringing out that feeling in others and having their assistance with you care about our city. That's important to all of us. It's important to our children, who will inherit what we leave here for them. So thank you for that, and I appreciate you.
You all can clap because we did know what Vice Mayor Romulus said. We all appreciate you, sir. We all clap now. Thank you.
My name is Steve Mukerman. I'm at 225 West Ocean. I was going to speak, but I will just kind of touch, I think Ms. Oyer is right about the straws and Styrofoam. I think 10 years from now, those things will be obsolete, so it'd be kind of good if we got ahead of the curve, because in 10 years from now, that probably will be a thing of the past. But what I was going to speak about was litter. I've been here for 25 years, and litter's gotten much worse. I often wondered if it's more of an issue of just lack of trash cans or just lack of knowledge or ignorance, if you will. I think it's the latter. The reason I say that is back in the 60s and 70s, most of you don't remember, but there was a big push by the government to kind of clean things up, pitch in, you know, put litter in place. They had a really good commercial of an Indian kind of washing inside the road as cars goodbye, and these white trash kids threw a bunch of trash out, and Indian starts crying. So that was, it made a big impact on me. And I think litter has become a big issue here, at least in my neighborhood. And I think it's just people don't know. And the reason I say that is, when I went to Publix the other day, right there at Ocean and Woolbright there in US1, as I walked in, there was a Publix employee sitting inside the building, eating a sandwich, having a soda, no problem at all. When I came out 15 minutes later, he actually left this trash right there where he sat, didn't even bring it in, even though there was, he walked by two trash cans to bring inside. He left it there. So I brought the trash in, gave it to the manager, he was appalled. But I think it'd be really good, kind of on the tone of kind of keeping Boynton Beach clean and beautiful, maybe put in our water bills, you know, a big focus, you know, let's make sure we put our litter away. Maybe get the code guys, like a sweep once a month, once a week. There's plenty of litter, we all know where it is. Whoever owns those houses, you know, put a note in the door, pick the litter up, and tell the cops, you know, $100 fine for littering. I think we should really get a focus on that. I think it'd be good PR for the city, good fodder for all of us, and I think we should get ahead of that, and, you know, with all the good things coming in the city, that'd be a really good thing for our city, because it is an issue, and we should really get ahead of the curve on that. And finally, been here a long time, I think you guys have done a lot of good things. The last year, you were turning the screws, so you can do it. Thank you for what you're doing, but let's get the focus on the litter as well, and appreciate it.
My name is Barbara Bernardin, and I reside at 9873 Lawrence Road, Boynton Beach. I would like to again take the time to acknowledge that young lady who is being recognized tonight, if they are still in the room, as a mentor of young women, when the bad news is out, it's out. It's on TV, it's on social media. So that means those parents are doing an incredible job, and I would like to take the time again to thank them for their hard work, and those are the kind of news that we want to see more of, not just the bad, but also the good. So thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, for taking the time to acknowledge those parents and that young woman who's doing an incredible job in this community. Thank you.
I think this is the first time we had a meeting where we had no complaints. You know, I'm kind of nervous. I've been there over 14 years. Wow.
Seeing no more further public audience, moving on to administrative. I believe we have one candidate for an advisory board.
Yes, I think it's my appointment.
Yep.
Was it the senior?
Advisory board.
Advisory board. We have one applicant, Antonio Valatoro.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next, we're moving on to discuss the Palm Beach County Transportation Planning Agency Independent. So I guess we have Nick to discuss the slideshow at that one, so you can see, they got the clicker as well.
Oh, Nick, I kept looking, I said, "That guy looks familiar."
Well, good evening, Mayor, and members of the commission. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to address you this evening. I have a brief presentation, just want to orient you to the Palm Beach Transportation Planning Agency, our role and responsibilities to you, as well as your participation in the work that we do. And then I've got a couple of things I'm asking you for. So we're going to walk through this quickly. First, who is the TPA? Well, we are 21 locally elected officials. We have five of the seven county commissioners on our governing board, and we also have 15 municipal elected officials from our 13 largest cities. Mayor Grant sits as your representative, and Commissioner McCray, who did in fact attend our governing board member training workshop just last week, is your alternate. We are the policymaking board for transportation-related matters for Palm Beach County. Our mission statement is very simple, to collaboratively plan, prioritize, and fund transportation. And our vision aligns well with one of your own strategic initiatives, to provide a safe, efficient, connected, and multimodal transportation system. We have been around for about 40 years as a governmental entity, making decisions on the transportation systems and services that will be here in Palm Beach County. Things like the interstate highway, things like the turnpike, things like the tri-rail service, as well as our east-west arterials and our local roadways. In more recent times, we have become focused on this term that I like to call complete streets. Complete streets are facilities that are designed and operated to enable safe access for all users, with a special focus on our pedestrians, bicyclists, and then full accommodation for our motorists and our transit riders, regardless of their age or ability to travel. We have placed a special focus at the Palm Beach TPA on the vulnerable users, the pedestrians and the bicyclists, and want to ensure that every time we touch a road, we improve the safety of that facility for everyone who might be using it. We are passionate about safety. Again, our vision is a safe, efficient, and connected multimodal transportation system. And to underscore that point, in February, the governing board of the TPA was asked to adopt targets for the number of fatalities and serious injuries, traffic-related fatalities and serious injuries, that we would accept as a community for the year 2018. And the resounding response to that federal mandate to establish a target was from our governing board that we will accept none. We call that a Vision Zero commitment. We are passionate about rebuilding our roadway system to eliminate traffic-related fatalities and serious injuries, and we are partnering with our member communities, our cities, and our county to do just that. We have created a number of resources to equip not only the representative and alternate to our board, but also all of our elected officials to lead well with respect to transportation investments. We want to make sure that you understand the role of the TPA in allocating federal and state transportation dollars, gas taxes, and user fees to various projects, as well as maximize your ability to influence the local decisions that are being made by others, whether it's the county or your neighboring cities. We've also created what we call a member profile for each one of our communities, highlighting demographic data for the people who live and work here in Boynton Beach, as well as the roadway ownership for all of your roads, whether it's county, state, or city, or local private pedestrian and bicycle facilities that exist today, as well as places where sidewalks are missing, transit stops and ridership. And maybe one of the more important resources, we have a map of all of the projects that will be constructed, transportation-related projects that will be constructed in the next five years, regardless of who's going to be doing the work. So we'll show you the state projects, the county projects, we'll even show you your own projects that are upcoming in the next five years. And those documents can be found at palmbeachtpad.org/profiles. Why does Boynton matter to the TPA? Well, you are our third-largest city in Palm Beach County. We are the countywide transportation planning agency, and we want to ensure that your voice is fully heard and influencing the decisions that are made at our agency. You are a coastal community of connections. You are a place where people come together, and your waterfront access is very unique and distinctive for Boynton Beach. And then your strategic plan aligns with our vision. You connect our community. Your desire is to connect your community through safe, accessible, and multimodal systems that improve the quality of life. I love, sidebar briefly, that you have the word multimodal in your strategic initiative, because I remember when we were adopting our vision as an agency, that Mayor Grant gave me a little pushback on the inclusion of that word, but I think it's a very appropriate word to describe the kind of transportation system that we all know we want to provide for our citizens. Why does the TPA matter to Boynton Beach? Well, this is a very important slide. We are your planning and funding partner, funding for projects such as the FEC safety infrastructure to allow you to establish a quiet zone on the FEC railway, as well as supporting the city in a pursuit of a region-wide additional grant for rail crossing safety improvement funds. The Federal Rail Administration has published a notice of funding available... The Federal Rail Administration has published a notice of funding availability, and we've been working with your staff, as well as our other member cities, to submit a consolidated application for additional funding for rail safety. We're also your liaison to the Florida Department of Transportation, to Palm Beach County, and to your neighboring cities for projects like the proposed improvements that we were going to be discussing on Thursday morning at the TPA meeting for the US-1 corridor, influencing the upcoming resurfacing work the DOT is going to be doing. You've actually submitted a project for funding, a request for funding to us for Boynton Beach Boulevard modifications, and we want to help you influence, and this is an important one for your community, we want to help you influence the county's scope of work for their upcoming resurfacing project on Seacrest Boulevard that will be done in three years. That's an infrastructure surtax project, and it's a window of opportunity for you to influence the dollars that they will already be spending on that road, to ensure that the work that they do will maximize its value to your community. We also want to help you influence the design of interchange projects that are upcoming, both at Boynton Beach Boulevard and Gateway Boulevard in the city of Boynton Beach. And then lastly, we are your voice in regional transportation matters. We want to give you full voice in the design of the roadway projects that occur here, in the discussion of a concept called "mobility fees." And briefly on that point, today, Palm Beach County has what's called a "road impact fee," where every developer pays for a portion of the road capacity that their new project will consume. The TPA has asked me to help facilitate the discussion about transitioning from a road-only fee to a mobility fee that would allow developers to contribute not only to the portion of road capacity they are needing, but also to their cost, or their portion of the sidewalks, the bicycle facilities, the streetlights, and the transit infrastructure that those new development projects create the need for. And we also want to assist you with developing and influencing the discussion about Palm Tran, as well as Tri-Rail Coastal Link, transit service expansions, and then safe routes to school to provide access to our educational facilities for those who choose to walk or bike. Well, where are we going? Our TPA governing board adopted a resolution back in the fall of 2017, saying that in order to empower all members to lead, in order to avoid undue influence by any one member, and in order to maximize the flexibility to the agency to provide responsive planning services to the public, they want us to transition from an agency that is hosted by Palm Beach County to an agency that is independent and accountable to all of our member jurisdictions equally. In order to do that, we have a couple of asks of you. First, we are asking all of you as elected officials to please get involved. In fact, we've had rotating TPA governing board meetings that are happening throughout Palm Beach County on a monthly basis. This Thursday morning, we are going to be here in Boynton Beach at the Intercoastal Park Clubhouse. Thank you for hosting that, and we're really looking forward to that opportunity. That's at 9:00 AM Thursday morning. We're also asking you to direct your staff to submit projects for funding to us annually. The TPA operates two discretionary grant funding programs. We call them our Local Initiatives Program for projects up to $5 million in total cost, and our Transportation Alternatives Program for infrastructure projects up to $1 million in total cost. We would love to partner with the city in more projects in Boynton Beach. And then third, we want you to, we want to help you influence the state and county projects, as well as those transit service investments. We want to help you get involved and to influence these decisions well. We have two asks of you to support our transition to independence. First, we're asking all of our member agencies to budget for annual member dues starting in fiscal year 19. The dues amount is being proposed at 10 cents per capita, so for Boynton Beach, that would equate to a dues payment of around $7,400. We would ask that you would budget for that in fiscal year 19 and forward, and make that payment to the TPA in October. We're also asking member cities to consider entering into a line of credit agreement to support the TPA. We're asking for four, three to four of those. Not every member entity needs to do that, but we are, I did want to make you aware that we are pursuing those relationships as well. But the primary ask of you is the member dues payment. We're asking for all of our member agencies to participate in that way. And I'll close with this, why are we asking you for member dues? We are a federal-funded agency, but we're funded in, through federal highway and federal transit grants, and we incur a handful of expenditures, not a lot, but a handful of expenditures that are not federally reimbursable. In order to maximize our agency effectiveness, we would like to be able to spend dollars on advocacy, and that's a federal no-no. We can't do that with federal dollars, so we're asking for local contributions to make sure that we have the most competitive chance to win discretionary federal grants, like the Build Program, which was formerly known as Tiger Grants, the Rail Infrastructure Safety Program, the CHRISI Program, the US DOT Smart Cities Initiative, as well as any discretionary transit service grants that we would pursue for projects like Tri-Rail Coastal Link. We also will use those TPA member dues to improve our public engagement, to provide better promotional items and support for community activities, and then to enhance staff performance. Things like professional society memberships, APA memberships are not federally reimbursable, so we would be able to provide those memberships to our staff to attract and retain a great workforce. I'm going to close there, and Mr. Mayor, if you have any questions, or any of the Commissioners, otherwise, again, I appreciate the opportunity to introduce the agency to some of the Commissioners that I haven't had much contact with.
I mean, you know, I'm for this, I think I'm also on the Steering Committee, and I'm on the disadvantaged Trevor Local Coordinating Board as well. And so I know that the TPA, we actually changed its name from MPO, because we got tired of explaining what, that the Metropolitan Planning Organization is a transportation planning agency. And this is very exciting for Palm Beach County, because we have a lot of new transportation that is coming within the city, or in the county, because we also plan on having more people in the county. And unless we plan for more people, the traffic is only going to get worse. Board Member McCray, then Board Member Casello, followed by Vice Mayor.
Thank you, sir. I'd just like to say to Nick, I thank you for your overview, and with Mr. Livergood, who was our staff employee who retired from the city of Boynton, when I met with Nick the other morning, I said, "Do we have anybody from Boynton?" And he was happy to tell me, Andrew Mack, that you was there. Thank you, sir. Keep us, keep making us proud. Thank you.
Just a quick question, how's the county administration feel about you going independent?
It's a valid question. I think that the short answer is they're supportive. County administration is supportive of us transitioning to independence, because while they understand that by hosting the TPA, they have a little bit more influence, they also recognize the need for this agency to be directly accountable to all of its municipal members. So they would like us to transition away from them, so that they can clearly control the things that our county owned and operated, and allow the TPA, which is really a partnership between the county, the largest cities, really all of our municipalities, and our port, to operate as an accountable agency to all of those members.
Just one other quick question. Those road impact fees that these developers pay, do they stay in the area, or are they pooled?
So to, is it council member, what's the right term?
Commissioner.
Commissioner, to Commissioner McCray's point, Mr. Mack and I were on the phone this morning, talking about that very fact. How are road impact fees paid by developers within Boynton Beach used for transportation projects? The short answer is that you're in Zone 4 of the county's road impact fee system. That zone has as its southern boundary Boynton Beach Boulevard, then it draws south to Gulf Road, and then east to the coast. As its northern boundary, it has Lake Worth Road. To the west, it's the Everglades, and to the east, it's the ocean. So a project that happens, say, 500 Ocean, that pays an impact fee payment, I want to say it was in the vicinity of $2 million, gives that money to the county, and the county will then decide how to spend that on a road capacity project anywhere in that boundary. So the conversation we're having is to talk through the nuances, the issues associated with transitioning from a road fee system, where that fee can only be used to create road capacity, and a large zone system that gives maybe a little too much flexibility in the administration and the expenditure of those dollars, to a multimodal system that would say, "Let's collect a fee from that developer, still to pay for their share of the infrastructure we all know we need," and a smaller zone system that would require us to spend the money closer to where the developer paying that fee is located. And then the third part that we're suggesting for the TPA board to consider on Thursday is an endorsement of a more clear avenue for local input in the selection of which projects are going to be built with those fees that are collected. Today, it's a county-staff-driven process, and we would love to have our cities be a more aggressive participant in the proposal of projects and the selection of those projects that ultimately get built.
Thank you.
I have a few questions for you. You mentioned about the impact fee and then the mobility fee. Is this an additional fee to developers?
So that's another great question. On the way over here this evening, I was on the phone with Todd Bonlaren from County Administration, and he was, he's got some consternation about the discussion that's happening at the TPA regarding the road impact fee. The idea that we're suggesting is that the entire county should transition from a road-only fee to a multimodal fee, or a mobility fee, that would still be administered on a countywide basis, but it would allow for expenditure not only on road projects, but also on sidewalks, bike lanes, streetlights, to provide a safer environment for those walking or biking or driving at night, as well as transit infrastructure. His response to me was, "The cities can go ahead and impose an additional fee today for multimodal infrastructure projects if they would choose to, but it would be in addition to the county's collection of a road fee." We understand that new fees are difficult to add to the palate, and so we think that transitioning from one to the other is a more equitable approach to requiring mitigation from private developers in partnership with the public sector to build the right kind of projects. I give you a long answer. The short answer is, we want to replace the road fee with a mobility fee, not add to it.
Mobility fee, correct?
The devil's in the details on that question. It is always in the details. The short answer is, maybe. The longer answer is that a mobility fee needs to be supported by a list of projects, line-item infrastructure projects that you would like to build to improve mobility in your community. That list may result in a higher fee per square foot of non-residential, or per unit of residential development. Or if the majority of that fee was driven by road capacity needs that don't actually exist in this community, the multimodal fee might be lower in this particular area of the county than the existing road fee, because the county at this point may be collecting road capacity fees in this part of the county without an intent to build road capacity projects in the city of Boynton Beach.
Of course, and I understand that. So as you're doing this pitch, going around to different cities and speaking with them, are you also reaching out to the development community and speaking to them as well, because they will play a significant role in this?
We are. We've done quite a bit of discussion with our Chambers of Commerce, as well as with our Economic Council, about this very issue, about how do we create the infrastructure that will attract future businesses, future employees to Palm Beach County, to the cities in Palm Beach County? How do we create an environment where people will want to come and work?
In their opinion, is this the right move?
And this multimodal, well, I can't summarize for everyone, but the general sense that we get is that the feedback is very positive, that the types of people who are getting out of school right now are looking for environments that allow for active living. They want to walk, bike, ride the bus, or drive at their choice, not because, they don't want to be forced into a driving commute pattern, because that's the only safe way to move around an area. So if they're choosing between Palm Beach County or an area that has a more multimodal environment, a lot of the folks coming out of college right now are choosing those multimodal environments, and then finding employers that are willing to be located in those cities.
In the answer to my question, the development/business community, are they in support? Have you felt them out? Are they seeing the benefit in making this move of being under the county umbrella versus being an independent agency? That's the question.
Oh, you switched questions on me.
No, it was the same question.
The, I thought the mobility, well, the mobility fee versus road fee is a very different conversation than a hosted agency versus an independent agency. They're two separate things. The development community doesn't, we haven't really asked them, "Do you want us to be hosted by Palm Beach County, or do you want us to be independent?" The development community is not directly affected by the, by whether we operate...
I feel like I'm confusing you, so let's move on from that. So how about, let's answer the question of becoming an independent agency, where is the oversight if you're not under the umbrella of the county?
So right now, the, I work on the day-to-day direction of the 21-member TPA governing board. That is my oversight.
That's your oversight. What's their oversight? What is the agency's oversight if you become independent of the county? If the agency becomes independent of the county?
The agency is, the policy decisions are made by the 21-member board of elected officials. Their oversight is the electorate, the people who elect them to those positions, and then the local boards that appoint them to serve in those capacities.
Vice Mayor, I'd like to say is that, once we make our decisions, and the 21 of us agree what we want to do for the following year, then it needs to go for approval again in front of five of the county commissioners that are on our board, including the two others, so that the county can approve our budget. Is that correct, Nick?
Right now, as a hosted agency, the county, we could, the 21-member governing board for the TPA could adopt a budget, and the county could say, "We're not going to grant you those funds." Even though the county is being repaid for all of those dollars, because we are a reimbursement-funded agency through federal grants, we're spending a county dollar first, so the county could say to us, "We're not going to give you the approval that your board gave you." Does that make sense?
The oversight that I'm seeking, for example, I get it. So you're basically saying that it's the elected officials that will sit on that board, and it's also the electorate that elects the elected officials that sit on your board, that's the oversight that will determine whether or not proper allocation of funds are being spent, and salaries aren't being completely out of line, and different things like that. That's, my concern is that if you're leaving the agency, or leaving the umbrella of the county, and now operating on an independent stage, how do we maintain that accountability to the public and to everyone else that's involved in paying into these fees, and mobility fees, and multimodal fees, and all of that? That's the question, and I'd like for you to give me a clear answer about that.
The simple answer is that we are a government agency, and under the Sunshine Laws, all of the meetings have minutes, all of the meetings are noticed, and we also have advisory boards that are under the Sunshine Law, like our TAC Board, and I think there is another one, a Citizens Advisory Board. So not only do we have government officials, we have government employees acting as an advisory board, and concerned citizens acting as an advisory board to us as well.
Add to that?
Well, I just would say, much like your city council manager form of government, you employ a manager who then runs the city government, subject to the fence posts or the parameters that you have given her to operate within. So as a TPA Board Director, I operate the TPA as an agency within the parameters that the 21-member governing board has given me to operate within. And that's true today, but it's also subjected to an additional layer of bureaucracy, in that the county administrator has to sign off on those decisions, and the county commission has to bless our budget, because we're hosted by them. So I can have the direct governing board tell me what to do, and then the county administrator tell me not to do it.
So last question is, what is the benefit of Boynton Beach partnering up with you guys, and the benefit in terms of what is our cost now compared to the, I believe you said 10 cents?
10 cent per capita.
Per capita.
Annual dues.
What was our, what's our current contribution, and how does that differ from what you're asking, becoming the TPA agency?
So we don't have local dues at all right now. None of our members pay local dues. The local dues allow us to maximize our effectiveness as an agency, but we can transition from being hosted to being independent, even if the members choose not to pay local dues. They're separate questions. I don't need local dues to operate as an independent agency. I need local dues to operate as an effective agency. I can't do everything that a TPA should do if I only, if I only spend money consistent with the federal reimbursement regulations.
The dues would be a part that would take up the advocacy, that, you know, we cannot spend federal dollars for, that we can go out and say, "We want this done," and then this is why we get in the dues for each municipality. This is why you're asking for it. That's the end of summation right there.
Yeah, that's the primary need for, for local dues.
So we would basically, as a city, be able to have more empowerment to have the impact fees and different monies that are coming out of our city come back and be used within our roads and within our mobility systems? Is that the purpose of this? Is that the benefit of transferring from an MPO to a TPA? I know, again, that's just, that's just a name change, but I mean, in terms of what you're also proposing as well.
So the primary, it's a tricky question. The primary benefits for the advocacy funding are on state and federal discretionary grants, because now we're lobbying external to ourselves. The conversation about road fees, where they're being spent... The conversation about road fees, where they're being spent, and transition from a road fee to a mobility fee is now a conversation where I have municipal members desiring a modification to the status quo, and county commissioners desiring retention of the status quo. So that's a complicated question, and we would not use local member dues to pay a lobbyist for activities, for lobbying activities to the county commission, because we would essentially be lobbying our own policymaking governing board members in that action. You're not following that?
I feel like there's a lot more layers that need to be uncovered in this whole process, but we'll get there when we get there. I'll leave it at that.
Just a quick question. If a, if you do go independent, and a municipality decides not to put into the dues system, pay dues, would they still get the same representation, and what is the ramifications to that? Like the IG there, some of the counties, some municipalities didn't want to?
You know, our sales pitch has been, "This enables us to be a maximum, to maximize our effectiveness as an agency." You're a member of the TPA, and we think it's in your best interest to maximize the effectiveness of this agency.
I understand.
The practical answer is, we're asking all of our members to pay the dues.
And if they don't, will they still get the same representation? That's my question.
One of the, one of the requests I've been asked to get an answer to is, are the cities and the county willing to contribute these dues on an annual basis? Which is why I'm here this evening, asking you, are you willing to direct your staff to bring a future action item to you to support payment of these dues? If you don't, and you're the only city, it's going to create a challenging question for our, rest of our governing board as to how to respond to your decision. If you don't pay the dues, and half of the cities also choose not to pay the dues, it will create a different challenging question for our governing board to wrestle with as to how to proceed. So I guess I can't tell you. I can only tell you that in the majority of the conversations I've had, this has been a supported item, because the entities that serve as members of our governing board see this as a valuable investment of a few dollars to maximize the agency's effectiveness.
But we won't know that everybody's on board yet until this actually happens.
I don't know everyone's on board until I have votes at all 15 of my member local governments. So I have 13 municipalities, the county commission, and the port. I've had a vote at the port.
Well, let me ask you this question. As a director of this agency here, would you personally not hold whatever municipality did not decide not to pay dues? Would you hold them like hostage? That's poor choice of words, but...
I think the question for me would be, what reservations are preventing you from supporting this initiative?
Well, we could argue them back and forth, but I'm just saying, if they say no.
Sure. How can I share those, and how can I address those? My goal, you know, our mission statement is to collaboratively plan, prioritize, and fund transportation. My goal is to build consensus on these things, not to figure out what to do when people don't like where we're going.
Vice Mayor.
Would there be a time that you would feel that the 10 cents per capita would need to increase, and is that something we should be expecting where the price keeps jumping, either because of salaries or whatever that may be?
No.
So, these are not paying staff salaries. These are not paying any planning activities at all. These are just advocacy, public engagement, and memberships in professional societies. The estimated amount we're requesting, we're also asking you to agree that it will be fixed for the first five years. Now, again, we've never collected dues before, so we're in uncharted territory as to how effective this will be and what these costs will ultimately become, but we're saying it won't increase for five years. At the end of that five-year period, we'll bring it to our governing board and say, "This is what we've been able to accomplish with these member dues payments. Do you like what we're doing? Do you have any requests for reductions, any requests for increases? If you want us to do more, are you willing to ask your local governments to contribute more?" It'll be up to the governing board. We're five years away from any experience to inform that conversation, so I really don't have a good answer for you at this point.
And we could discuss this further at our budget hearing?
Yep.
At the budget hearing, I would like to see something more tangible, either some type of list of where this 7,500 or whatever it would be that we would be paying to this agency. How would that be potentially be used? My concern is just transparency. I would like to see how that works, you know? $35,000 later, I want to make sure that that's actually a good return on our investment. We're not paying it now. We at least know what we're not paying for now, but we start paying for something in the future, how do we know that that return on investment is actually going to be worth our while and be worth the investment? That's what I'm looking for, and I'd like to see that in some type of writing in the near future. Thank you.
Commissioner Cass, do you have anything to say?
Yeah, I think that, you know, there's obviously a lot more information that, that 'll need to be explained over time, but I have zero concern about the dues that would be paid to the organization if it resulted in hundreds of thousands or millions of additional dollars being kept in the city as a result of not having the county delegate projects outside of our city limits and fund it with our money. So if, you know, I think that we could have staff put this together and look at the amount of impact fees that have been generated over the past five years, and how much money has come back to us from the county, and I'll pay $7,000 in dues all day if the result is that hundreds of thousands or millions of dollars that our developers pay in our city are getting shipped out to other cities who might not be developing and contributing. So it's, I'm entirely unconcerned about the cost of potentially joining the association, and more concerned about the cost-benefit of the impact fees being retained within the city limits, personally.
And you can't pay it all day, because we're going to run out of money.
All right. Is there any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the dues, and for the city staff to go forward?
I'm not ready to move in that direction. I think I would like to see more information either brought back to us at our budget input meeting before we can move on making some type of motion to accept that.
All right. Is there anyone else from the board that would want to make that motion?
Well, you know, really, after we have the meeting Thursday, I'm just saying, we could look at it, but I'm in favor, because I know it's going to be good, it's going to be beneficial to us. I'll offer motion that we proceed.
Do I have a second?
I would, I would just offer that, you know, at first blush, I'm in support of it, but not prepared to vote on it tonight, just because it's just been presented to us. So I would just request that, since there doesn't seem to be any urgency, since it has to be budgeted for fiscal year 19, that, you know, we can discuss this or get more informed, you know, whether it's a month or 60 days. I think, I don't think that would be prohibitive.
So, we wish-
I wouldn't be prepared to vote on it tonight.
So, if we don't have a motion, do we want to have a table for staff to look at this in the future?
Able.
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? We'll take a look into it next month.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to consent agenda. Commissioner Katz, we moved item 6C to after, what is it? 8C. So may I have a motion to approve?
Moved.
All right. All those in favor state so by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Bids and purchases over $100,000. Proposed resolution number R-18-070, authorize the city manager to sign a contract with R&amp;D Paving LLC of West Palm Beach, Florida for the Northwest 11th Avenue reconstruction in the amount of $461,147.50 plus a 10% contingency.
I'm going to offer motion to approve or discussion?
Second.
All right.
Discussion would be, did we try to hire local?
At the RFP process?
I know it's an RFP process, but I'm still saying that we have, let me rephrase it then. At the RFP process, did we have any local presenters?
Yeah.
No.
This was a bid, this was a bid on the work itself as being bid. The engineering was done over the last three years, so that wasn't part of it. But the new program, yes, the local preference would have been included. I can't tell you if this is a local bid or who won, because remember, there's that, there's the range. If they didn't fit within that range, we wouldn't have gone to number two. And I wish Tim was here to say exactly, but I do know it was, we used that policy, and was in place and used for this bid. So, my belief is, is the low, the, if anybody used that, it wasn't, they didn't work close enough to be awarded, just because they're local. And I'm not even sure if this one's not local.
No.
West Palm Beach.
Yeah, or they did not submit a bid. Right. So, sorry about that. Tim normally is here to answer those questions. He knows it better than I do, so.
Any further discussion from the board?
Right here. You know, this is a project, model block, that we have been underway for some time, and we're going to have to get it, like, underway during the summer. I'm just saying, with school being out, and I don't want anything, like, to hamper what we're trying to move forward on. I'm just saying this would be a positive light for the city of Boynton, through my comments.
Is the representative for R&amp;D, are they here tonight?
I don't believe, no, they're not.
They're not? Did staff discuss with them our intention of hiring locally and working with subcontractors that are in the local area and things like that? Is that a part of their?
Unfortunately, we're still in term. So, that's a fairly new thing. So a lot of these projects you'll see, you've seen in the last couple of months, and you'll see coming up. A lot of them started the bidding process and all that prior to that ordinance being in place. With that said, we discuss with every contractor, hiring local, just like R&amp;D says. We go meet with them, we're working with them. I wish I was more familiar with this specific project. I am more familiar with some project coming in after this one that you're going to discuss, which I do know we are working with local contractors. This one is, I'm not quite as familiar with, but the answer to you is, any project that bids after that ordinance was in place does include that requirement. Anything before that, we are asking the contractor to use those requirements. Does that answer your question? Okay.
Since Tim is not here, Lori, where is Tim tonight? I'm just saying, vacation or sick or what?
He's hiding out in the mountains in Alabama on vacation.
All right, vacationing, thank you.
Much-needed vacation, I will say.
I will say that, too.
And if I might add, Mayor, that just, you know, this is the, finishing up our model block project, this, once we get these improvements in, which will include paving work, sidewalk work, undergrounding of electric, new utility, that this paves the way, no pun intended, of 11 new homes that'll be able to be built to continue and complete the model block program that was on 10th and 11th Avenue. So it's just going to be outstanding once we get there.
And doesn't this also create the connected Seacrest to?
To First.
To First on 11th, so that they're-
Yep. And that'll really help with the traffic flow at the school. We've been partnering with the school. Like Commissioner McCray said, we're doing the work over the summer while the kids are out.
Wonderful.
It should be completed before they start.
At least the majority of the underground and the paving, yes.
As far as the tearing up of the road.
Right.
Okay.
But, yeah, so we're very excited. We were very successful in acquiring the right-of-way that we needed along this entire stretch of road, and everybody on the property owners helped us and cooperated, so it's going to be really good. We're excited.
Introduce yourself, since you're there.
Yes, I'm Chris Rochek. I'm Engineering Division Manager with Utilities.
You're going to see a few new faces tonight.
Okay.
Torturing them, making them come up and present. It's good for them.
All right. Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none? All those in favor state so by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Proposed resolution number R-18-071, authorize the city manager to sign a contract with Rick Mann International, Inc. for progressive design build for Central Seacrest Corridor Utility Improvement Phase Two as a result of the RFQ in the amount of $3,233,885.33 for design for services and a total project value of $10 million.
Second for discussion?
Yes.
Thank you. How long has this project been before the city? I'm just saying, because we've been talking about the Seacrest Corridor project, how long have we been dealing with this?
Michael Lowe, Deputy Direct Utilities and Manager of Technical Services. Commissioner, we've been working on this for a long time. This is the second phase of the actual construction work. Original design was done some eight years ago, but for a variety of reasons, it's taken a while to move forward.
So this is phase two of what will be a third phase coming up in about three more years? Yeah, it spans over.
Once we finish the Times Square project, we will do the last phase, but that's right in the middle of that area.
My final comment, it was long overdue. I'm through.
All right. Vice Mayor, then Commissioner Cassillo.
Three questions. How soon will we see active work happening in the community? You're going to give us a presentation?
Yes, I have a-
Feel free.
If this wants to move, there we go. Quick overview, first thing is, we're going to be replacing old water lines through the neighborhood. We're going to be moving some of the water lines from rear easements to the front of the property for easier access. We're also going to increase the number of fire hydrants to meet updated standards. From, with regards to stormwater, there'll be a lot of swaling going on and other issues to reduce incidence of flooding. There'll be a lot of neighborhood improvements, including driveway aprons, replacing and adding sidewalks, and improving landscaping on Seacrest Boulevard, which I know has been asked for for quite some time. With regards to wastewater, we're going to design and construct a new force main to connect the South Federal Highway area and the southern end of the Barrier Islands, which is in our service area, so that we can start to impact collection. So here's the second phase, from Southwest 6th Avenue all the way down to Woolbright or 15th, and a little bit on the, that's all on the west side of Seacrest, and a little bit on the east side from Southeast 12th, again, to Woolbright. There's a lot of local flooding in that area, which we particularly want to get to. So the third phase would be the remaining area there on the east side. Total cost is going to be, of this first phase, 3.233 million. Total project is expected to cost 10 million. In this phase, work should start almost immediately, in answer to your question. They are going to start designing this force main from Seacrest Boulevard to Ocean Ridge and Riverwalk Plaza, but also, as well as working on the guaranteed maximum price, they're going to start construction on sidewalks and the driveway aprons, some tree locations and removals as we deal with trees that are in the right-of-way, and they will start some water line replacement where they can, in particular using pipe bursting. This picture gives a quick idea of the before and after, and how we hope to improve the defrontage on all the properties in the area. So the next steps would include sending individual letters to each property owner so that they know about potential tree relocation, removal, and replacement, talk about the driveways, temporary access so that we can move the water service from the rear to the front, and some general project information. This will include a community meeting to review the project, and we'll start preparing trees for relocation and the work on the driveways, sidewalks, et cetera. So that's, any other questions?
Estimated timeframe of when this will start?
We expect them to start immediately the contract's signed, so you should see work within the next three to four weeks in the area. Communications may start even quicker.
And expected completion date?
We'll know that when we get the GMP. It's a good 12 months, maybe 15 to 18. We'll wait until we get the guaranteed maximum price.
Our intention is to closely work with the members of the community living there, to inform them, to engage with them, and make sure that they are aware of every step of this process?
Yes, we've talked to them in detail about that. As before, we'll probably have a special phone-in number, and there will, there will be constant means for us firstly to deliver information about what's happening next, and secondly for residents to be able to communicate back to us.
Yes, Commissioner Cassillo, then Commissioner McCray.
The gentleman from the TPA was here, and he had mentioned, if I remember, about the resurfacing of Seacrest was in the queue. Is this any kind of a conflict, or are we going to be doing this?
No, this is a separate thing, which is set back at the edge of the right-of-way. It's basic landscaping in the areas. It's been planned for some time.
All right, so the water mains that you talk about that we're going to be replacing, correct?
Yeah, water mains, there's no water mains in Seacrest itself. All the water mains are going to be in the side roads.
Okay.
Is Seacrest getting torn up at all?
So Seacrest is not getting torn up at all? That's my concern. Okay, I don't want to resurface it twice.
No, no, we don't want to do that.
Thank you.
Mr. McCray?
Thank you. My question was, you said that you spoke to- My question was, you said that you spoke to the citizens already, but then you said you're gonna have a citizen meeting. I'm, I'm just saying, are you, have you had a citizen meeting yet?
We have. We, we, we had some earlier meetings with the local association, but now we're gonna have a formal project start meeting.
A follow-up, okay, that's good. Okay, and you said that that would be a phone number that they could use when citizens are not happy with the work that was performed, because when you did work over in my section, I'm just saying, I got a lot of phone calls and you all had to go out and continue to try to make it right. And I'm, I'm just saying, you know, I'd like for us to learn by doing and learn from our mistakes, this is what I'm saying.
We have always already spoken with the general contractor and he knows that there has to be somebody who can answer these calls readily.
My question is regarding the, the sidewalks along Seacrest, is that part of the, the project and the swales along Seacrest?
We're not touching sidewalks along Seacrest, no, that's a county road.
Okay, and so it's, it's not the swales or the sidewalks along Seacrest?
No.
Okay. But I guess the, the roads from Seacrest to Forest Park Elementary School?
Correct, yes, in particular, that's an area people.
And is it possible to make those sidewalks as wide as possible or, you know, according to, I guess, the standard, so they're gonna be four or five feet wide?
We've been talking to Public Works and Engineering about that and how to move forward with it, yes.
Okay. All right, and we have, any further discussion from the board? Saying none, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Proposed resolution number R 18 dash 072, authorize the city manager to sign a contract with Murphy Pipeline Contractors, Inc. of Jacksonville, Florida for construction of water distribution system, water main upgrades in the area of Southeast 27th Court to Southeast 31st Avenue as shown in the attached drawing in the amount of $1,352,112 and a 10% contingency. Murphy Pipeline was awarded as primary vendor as a result of a bid by the city on May 17, 2016. Second, discussion from the board?
I, I have some concerns, we need to slow down right now.
Okay.
Okay, what are we really doing?
Okay, so we have a short presentation. I wanna introduce, I'm gonna let one of our managers do the presentation, and I wanna introduce Tremaine Johnson's our interim manager of field operations. So, I'm gonna let him do this presentation and let you all get to know him and then pepper him with questions, and he should have the answers.
Yeah, no pressure.
We're not gonna pepper him with questions if we don't have him, but I'm just saying, when you're saying that we're doing this and spending this kinda money and the citizens are sitting out there looking, they need to know what we're voting on, we don't rubber stamp everything up here.
Oh, this is well overdue, Commissioner.
I know it's well overdue, but still, the citizens need to hear it, although it's well overdue.
I just like the meat and green pot.
What?
The meat and green pot, this is great.
Good evening to Mayor and Commissioners. I'm here to present to you and give you a, a general knowledge on what pipe bursting is. Pipe bursting is a trenchous method of replacing outdated and inadequate buried water mains. What pipe bursting consists of is pre-chlorinated pipe, HDPE, which is high polyethylene density pipe, which is made up out of petroleum. It's a, it's a thermo plastic pipe. The project scope, the project scope will take place in the corridor of Dewey Heights and Seacrest Estates in the southeast area of our city between Seacrest Boulevard and Dixie Highway, just south of 23rd Avenue. The scope of work includes upgrading roughly over 10,000 feet of four-inch AC pipe to six-inch HDPE pipe, upgrading as well 2,000 feet of six-inch AC pipe to eight-inch HDPE pipe. And the reason why we, we see it as imperative is because AC pipe has a tendency of causing a lot of breaks, if you have a lot of water main breaks throughout the city, and it's a lot older, it's, AC is short for asbestos cement. And so, we have a priority, we've looked at data over the years of where we just had too many breaks, so we're taking the initiative to get rid of that pipe and to put in new pipe that can last for the next 30 years. It impacts 11 streets in those areas and also we've looked at, since we've started the utilizing the pipe bursting method of upgrading our water mains, we've had, we've took, looked at data, we've looked at areas, and one of our priorities were to look at areas that didn't meet the latest codes of fire suppression. So, that was another one of our main objectives and making sure we approve in that area. Like I stated before, the project area consists of between the southeast corridor, just south of 23rd Avenue, between Seacrest and Dixie Highway. And I'm sorry to pitch it this kinda blurred, but as you can see in the project, the yellow indication dots are those fire hydrants that we have now currently. And the ones that are highlighted purple are the additional ones that we plan on adding during the project, like I said, so we can meet the latest codes of fire suppression. Advantages to pipe bursting, minimal disturbance to neighborhood streets during the construction of pipe bursting, there only needs to be an insertion pit and a retriever pit. So, unlike open traditional cut, it minimizes the, the cost for restoration. It has minimal impact to individual residents. Another advantage of pipe bursting is the whole object is during the operation, during the, the project is not to have the residents that would be affected by it not ever go out of water. So, if there's any residence that is home, we have a procedure where we have the, the contractor install what we call a high-line jumper that ties them into, so they'll still have water during that process. And also, the pipe is pre-chlorinated, unlike open cut where when it was, the object is when the customer leaves and goes to work and comes back home, that water's ready to be used and don't have to wait on bacterial tests. It's already test, it's already bacterial test taken and it's already approved and put right in back into operation, so there's really no need for boil water notices. And ability to easily make improvements to fire suppression and, and that's by installing new fire hydrants. Pipe bursting consists of, it's, if there's no trench that needs to be dug, the pipe has a bursting head on top of it which pulls through the old pipe once it's inserted into the old pipe and it continues to break, and the new pipe follows in the same trench as it breaks and breaks apart the old pipe and goes along the way. Any questions?
Yes, Commissioner McCray. Okay, insertion and retrieving pit, was that what we all did when we went from the East Water Plant to the West Plant and it took us forever weary? That's the new, that's the new month, y'all, ever weary.
Yes.
Okay, my main thing is as long as it don't have to stand up and, and block the flow of traffic, I, I'm just saying, as long as this, you know, that would not cause anybody like not to be able to get into their homes and stuff, this is my concern.
No, sir, we're not, no sir.
I'm ready to vote, okay? That's what I'm talking about.
All right. Yes, any further discussion from the board?
Well, I, I just wanna again, you know, reiterate the importance of this and in addition to the fact that we're gonna be adding additional fire, what are they, fire hydrants to help with safety and protecting lives and homes. I think this project is, is valuable and it's very important and again, long overdue, so, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
And then I, I guess the only question is, is that you are doing some tree replacement if someone has a tree in the, the swale of the right of way, you are replacing those trees?
We're picking areas, like I repeated, the insertion and the retriever pits. We're picking areas where there's no, around no any trees or any, any obstructions that can get in the way.
All right, wonderful. All right, any discuss, further discussion? Saying none, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to public hearing, the city commission will conduct these public hearings in its dual capacity as local planning agency and city commission. Item A is on the table, may have a motion to have it removed. Some of, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Jim?
These three items are quasi-judicial. If you intend to testify, if you think you might testify, if it, if the person next to you thinks you should testify, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? Thank you. When you come to the microphone, if you, to speak, if you have special qualifications, architect, engineer, plan or something of that nature, please identify your qualifications to the commission. The documents that are part of the commission backup are part of the record. If you want other documents to be made part of the record, they need to be identified and at the end of your presentation or testimony, copies left with the city clerk.
Yep, we need the applicant.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission. My name is John Lyon, I represent Owen Properties, I'm Director of Construction for Florida. We're here tonight seeking approval for our Lot 52 multifamily project on Gateway and Quantum Lakes Drive. This project initially was, was started back in 2011, 2012. It was previously permitted in 2012. It sat idle after the permits were issued. We've cleaned up any of the open issues. We've recently completed a replat, which took a year during 2017. So, there, there are no further obstructions for us to build the property and we've recently passed the planning and development meeting last month. And we're here tonight seeking a site plan major modification for setbacks along Gateway, along Park Ridge Boulevard and Quantum Lakes Drive. And that would be to reduce the setback to 15 feet along the roadways and seven feet along the lake banks and project side.
All right, any questions from the board?
Motion to approve?
Second. Yes.
Public hearing?
Oh, it's a public hearing, if anyone from the public would like to discuss.
Good evening, David Katsum here is the Chair of the Planning Development Board. Yesterday, I went into the city clerk's office just to re-listen to the portion of the meeting of our board and in the backup, it states how we were asking to please have the developer add an additional handicap spot to the two buildings that only have one. There are four buildings, two of the buildings have two, two of the buildings have one. In discussion with staff earlier this evening, staff saw no problem to have that happen. During our meeting, initially, the gentleman had said that there were, I believe, six handicap spots and, but they had four buildings, so, and also said that the, half the apartments, I believe it's on the first floor, are handicap accessible or, or ADA compliant. And I don't know how many apartments that comes to, but again, as, as the Chair of the Board and a Board that likes to see additional handicap spots where necessary, we feel the addition of two additional spots is, is not onerous on the applicant and we'd appreciate your going along with us. Thank you.
Everyone, you know, is, does the applicant have any issue adding two more handicap spots for a total of eight?
Uh, yes, you know, where, where you state that this is not onerous, well, this would require, you know, a modification to the site plan. The project is at its maximum capacity in terms of green area and parking spaces. We're required to have 186 parking spaces, we have 187 with six being handicapped. So, we meet and/or exceed the requirement of a residential property. This is not a commercial property, it's a residential multifamily apartment community. So, to make up and add two spaces, it's not that easy. There's a minimum width for this and this would cause a couple things to happen. We would either need to reduce the amount of green areas or we would have to reduce the overall number of parking spaces.
I guess then, then that is fine, so like the Chairman said, is that you have designed handicap accessible apartments. Is it possible for you and your management of this to identify certain regular parking spaces as identified to those apartments?
Yeah, as of right now, you know, anything on the first floor by current standards has to be FHA, ADA compliant. So, the total number is 52 out of the 104 units. The larger building, which consists of 32 units, has two handicap spaces and one of the smaller buildings, which has a larger number of two bedrooms, has the two handicap spaces as well. So, and the remaining two buildings have one. In Florida, right now, we own and manage about 5,000 apartments in 12 residential communities. There really hasn't been a, a strong request in, in, in our world from residents seeking additional handicap spots. Where that's happened in other parts of the county and other counties, we've made the arrangements to add a handicap space and go through the engineering process, which we would do to comply or, or assist with someone. But as of right now, out of, you know, just at Quantum Villas, we have nearly 800 apartments and the bulk of the handicaps remain empty at night. Where we have a shortage right now residentially is in standard parking.
Question?
Yes.
You said if you add the two additional handicap, this will reduce green space?
Well, we simply don't have the room. We either have to, the, the space has to come from somewhere. You know, handicap space is 12-foot wide plus a five-foot access lane, standard space being nine-foot and we, we either lose a standard space or two standard spaces to achieve a handicap space that will most likely sit unused.
Right, you said in your presentation that to do this, it will reduce green space. That's all I need to hear, sir, because yes, that's it, I'm fine with it.
Well, yeah, it's, we have to make it up from somewhere and we're so tight, you know.
We're good, we're good.
Yeah, yes, I'm sure. I would just request if there's, you know, consensus on the commission to increase the minimum requirements for handicap spaces, then that's, you know, a discussion to be had. But we, every single time a project comes before us, there seems to be a request to, to ask for more than the, you know, the, the minimum amount or the, the required amount and then it turns into a similar conversation. I think that, again, if, if there's consensus in the future to, to change the specifications for the amount of handicap spaces, but I don't, I don't know if doing this over and over again on every project and then, you know, if we want more handicap spaces, let's mandate more handicap spaces. On a citywide basis, not on a project by project basis. All right, thank you.
Mr. Lyons, the project stands before us right now, you're in compliance of all regulations, correct?
That is correct. We've sought POA permit, currently all the taxes are paid, everything is, is good to go, there's no outstanding issues, all roadblocks have been removed, plat is complete and approved. This is the final stage in, in a long journey.
Motion to approve?
Vice Mayor?
They already had a motion.
Yeah, we already have a motion, yeah.
Mr. Lyon, what's your commitment to hiring local contractors and local employees of the, for, to, for the build out and also the management of the facility?
Well, doing major projects such as this, and when I say major, you know, in excess of $10 million, in, in the past, we've hired outside contractors, areas, contractors either outside the state or outside of the area from either Tampa or Tallahassee and, and yes, sometimes they would come in and hire some local subcontractors, but, you know, we, we have changed our policies on that. We, we, you know, in, in closing out the projects and, and honoring warranties and getting the best quality work, we find that, you know, out of state, out of area, doesn't, doesn't, you know, worked to our advantage at all. So, we have internally changed our policy to hire local, as local as possible, from qualified GCs and subcontractors with, you know, as, as small a radius as possible. You know, unfortunately, there's no exact list of who's qualified and who's available right now to do work, but we're making every effort to hire local Boynton, local Palm Beach County and local people to get this done.
Thank you for that commitment, Mr. Lyon, and we also have an economic development director that is sitting here in the audience, that'd be somebody to get in touch with to maybe help facilitate with that list of local vendors and local contractors that potentially could work, you could work with to build out your project.
I would look forward to seeing the list and helping build the list.
He's the guy right there with the bow tie.
Okay.
Thank you.
Jim, I have a question, do we need to remove the planning and zoning condition of approval? Because it is in the backup that it is included.
You should address it and reject it, if that's your intent.
Is that a part of the motion?
Yes.
Okay. So I will, you know, so I forgot who made the motion. Did they want to amend it to reject the condition of approval? I think you did.
Correct. We'll reject that.
Okay. So the, the motion has been amended to reject the condition of approval to add two handicap spaces. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? Saying none. All those in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 8B, approve Boynton Village and Town Center master plan modification to amend the previous approvals for SMU parcel one from 115 single-family homes to 378 apartments and 55 townhomes, while reducing the total number of the approved residential unit allotment within the entire master plan from 1,120 to 1,115. And can we work, do this as well with item C? Improve Cortina three major site plan modification to construct 378 apartments, 55 townhomes, and related site improvements. Do you, does the applicant mind doing those two items together?
Bonnie Miskel here on behalf of the applicant. I'm a land use and zoning attorney of 26 years, and that would be fine. As a matter of fact, we've consolidated our presentation, and we'll just attach the plat at the back end.
Okay.
With your permission. Thank you. Staff has just said that is, I think you have to just instruct to add the consent item onto the back of this, if you haven't already.
Yes, and we will add the, thank you. The consent item of approve the Cortina, PUD replat three, record plat condition on the approval being the certification.
Thank you. Again, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission. Bonnie Miskel here on behalf of the applicant. We're delighted to present tonight this, our application to you. This is a little bit of an old aerial, but it gives you an idea of the subject area. We have Congress to the west. Renaissance Commons runs through the center of the site. Old Boynton is on the south side. The original approval included a master plan for approximately 106 acres. The 106 acres are shown in yellow. The crosshatched red area is, or actually yellow plus there's some additional, but we're here to amend the area that is in yellow here. And the red crosshatched area is approximately 21 acres, and that's the amendment, the modification to the site plan. That's parcel one. Just to give you a little bit of background on the surrounding zoning, the area to the east of the subject master plan and parcel is single-family residential and a canal. The area to the west is commercial, heavy, heavy commercial C3 with a regional mall further west of that on the west side of Congress. The SMU zoning category is what this property is located within. It's a very good transitional category from a lower intensity use to a much more high-intensity use, such as the commercial. The last, this, this master plan was amended several times over the year. It was originally approved in 2005. The latest approval on what is current today was in 2015. And it was amended to allow 643 condominiums, 350 apartments, and 115 single-family detached homes. The original approval was for 1,120 dwelling units and more than 400,000 square feet of non-residential. The subject parcel for the site plan is parcel one. It is platted today with 115 single-family homes, and we are requesting to amend parcel one to allow 55, well, I'll get there, 55 townhomes and 378 multifamily units. Again, that's within parcel one of the SMU portion of the property. We, the parcel one is comprised of, or the proposed parcel one is comprised of nine multifamily buildings totaling 378 units and 11 townhome buildings of five townhomes per building for a total of 55. Again, the master plan modification will result in an approval of 1,052 apartments and 55 townhomes in lieu of the 643 condominiums, 350 apartments, and 115 single-family detached units. This is the current approval, not the proposed. And you will see the area where we have the single-family lots, that's parcel one. So in yellow is the proposed parcel, the 378 units and the 55 townhomes. It is, it is surrounding or nearly surrounding a lake area, and we have an enlarged, we have proposed an enlarged and improved dog park. This is a colored rendering of the proposed parcel one. The 55, the 55 townhome units are located along the east side of the parcel, running along the canal. And the higher intensity, the 378 multifamily units are further in and closer to the commercial. On the south side of the multifamily is the Target, you all know the Target, and some larger, much heavier commercial uses. This is really a very good example of strategic planning. You have your single family across the canal. You then segue to a two-story townhome project, and then you segue further to a four-story project. The SMU does allow 55 feet in height. The townhomes are proposed at approximately 25 feet, and the multifamily is 40 feet, so 45 feet, excuse me. So we are under the maximum height that would be permitted under the zoning designation. The dog park is on the northeast, or pardon me, northwest quadrant of this parcel, as you can see it. And the expansion is on the south side, and it's a significant expansion to the existing dog park. So essentially, I have the site data up for you, but we comply with code. We have six more parking spaces than were required to under the code. We meet the handicap parking spaces. We're not asking for any special dispensation. We meet the purview's requirements. This is a depiction of the greenway that is currently developed and running along the canal. This is the two-story townhome product. And this is the four-story product. It is more internal and central to the site. In addition to the residential uses, we have significant amenities proposed for the property, a barbecue area, tot lot, a free-flowing pool, a clubhouse, a game room, a volleyball and racquetball court. So there's many amenities for these residents to enjoy, as well as a pedestrian walkway area around the lake, and of course, the greenway that is already developed along the canal. So I have elevations for you. This is the four-story product. This is its side elevation. We have the two-story townhome product with the garages showing. And this is the side elevation for the townhomes. This is a clubhouse elevation for you. It's a lovely clubhouse, significant in size.
Bonnie, real quick, is there parking garages in the apartments?
No, it's surface parked. And this, and I can't read it that way, so I'm going to pull up my little sheet, just to give you a sense of distance from, and again, this is a great planning on the part of the designer, but there's a significant, over 225, 250 feet between the single family to the east and the townhome buildings. So it's a very large area when you take the canal area, the greenway, and also the setback area. It's a very, it's nearly a football field. And the, and it's hard to see it there, but the cross-section below shows you, if you were standing in the backyard of the single-family residential, what you'd see. With the landscaping that is already installed on the greenway and the landscaping that is proposed along the perimeter of the townhome parcels, you won't be able to even see the four-story product. And you'll see bits and pieces of the two-story, which is very compatible with the single story across the canal. I want to talk, and I don't want to be disingenuous, but there was a number of neighbors that talked about traffic at the last meeting, so I'd like to talk about it with you. Because traffic is one of those things that is a little confusing and a bit convoluted. So this was originally approved for 1,120 units. We're actually reducing. We're going to end up with 1,115. You know, from the neighbor's perspective, I get it. They're looking at a vacant lot today. So they don't realize that this is a decrease, but it is technically a decrease. It's a decrease in daily, it's a decrease in AM, and it's a decrease in PM traffic. The way that the county looks at it and the way that the law looks at it is what we're vested for. And this particular master plan is vested for 1,120 units. At 1,115, you will have a decrease in traffic. So I've given you a chart here so that you can see the AM, the PM, the total, et cetera. But what you'll see if you look at the bottom line is it is a decrease across the board when you look at what was previously approved and vested versus what we're proposing to do with the master plan today. So finally, just to sum up a few benefits, this, this master plan was required to do approximately $19 million in roadway improvements. Those roadway improvements are done. They're completed. They're out there. They're being enjoyed today by the entire community. We're proposing and offering an additional half million dollars in improvements to expand the city-owned dog park and make it a more usable size because it's very, very popular. It's a very high-quality development by a high-quality developer. It will be plus or minus $430,000 additional dollars coming in in tax base. We have electric car charging stations. And as I mentioned, we have a number of amenities to serve the community, including the barbecue area, the clubhouse, the game room, the tot lot, the racquetball courts, et cetera. So it's a, it's a full, well-designed community. We're, we're happy to answer any of your questions. We have all our technical experts with us here this evening, and we're, we'd turn it over to the commission for questions. Oh, excuse me, and I will add, as to the plat, we didn't add a PowerPoint to the plat, but the plat was, as I mentioned before, 115 single-family lots. Should you approve the amendment to the master plan and the amendment to parcel one site plan, obviously, we need to amend the plat to reflect the new site plan. That's all that plat is. So if you approve the first two items, then you have to amend the plat.
Yes. Vice Mayor, would you like to begin?
I will provide a motion with the promise that the applicant will not change their mind on us again. Would that be okay?
Well, believe it or not, I actually was involved in the original one in 2005, and I think I'm going to retire by the time it might come back anyway. So, but I think this is it. This is the last vacant parcel.
I move to approve.
We have a first, any further discussion from the board?
I have discussion.
And then Commissioner Katz.
Bonnie, when I met with you, because I've already done a disclosure the last time, you know, I was hearing some concerns about the citizens that live close by your project, and they were saying about it were overlooking their backyard. Was this addressed?
It was. In fact, the, when the designer actually sat down and looked at placing buildings and actually establishing heights, they stepped the buildings down as they went to the eastern perimeter of the site to be compatible with the properties across the canal. And so that's how it has been addressed. In addition, we're over 250 feet away, and we have really two large, three tiers of landscaping. There's landscaping in backyards. There's landscaping on the greenway that is, has been there and has grown. And then there's landscaping on the east side of our property, running along the townhome properties. So we have extensive landscaping that we've put in there.
So if I was on the fourth floor, I would not be able to look over into the neighbors to the east? I would not be able to look into their backyard?
Oh, the fourth, the, the fourth, the buildings with four stories are approximately 400 feet away. So they're even that much further away, and they are separated by the townhome buildings. So the answer is yes. You could not look into those single-family lots.
That's what I need to hear. Thank you.
Yes. Commissioner Katz?
Yeah, I wanted to also highlight a part of this. You know, I've been in conversation with, with the developer since last year when we downgraded the density of the Alta project that's on the northwest corner of the Cortina itself. And, you know, when the dog park was built and when the district was built, which are the apartments that exist right now, it became, you know, very clear that the dog park was, was already being overutilized before any of the new units even were created. And that, I think, sparked for the developer the willingness to increase the size of the dog park and put up the half a million dollars, as shown on the slide there. What I would ask, and John Markey can come up and kind of speak to it if he's willing to, is that the, the combined population of Renaissance Commons and now the Cortina project is, is significant to say the least. You're talking about thousands of residential units. There is no public park in this area other than the existing inadequate dog park. What I, what I would request, and developers seem to be on board, is that we maximize the, the use of this park or maximize the offerings of this park by upgrading it. There's, there's park impact fees available. I've spoken to Wally, and he stated that a fraction of that could be used for this. He's not here tonight, but he would speak to that at a future date. In addition, you can see up there that it's generating almost a half a million dollars in potential additional annual revenue. Also, the maintenance for the existing park is funded, I believe, in perpetuity by the master association of all these new developments going online. What I would request is, as a condition of approval, I believe is the correct term, that, that we try to move forward on maximizing the, the offerings of this park. You can see in the, in the picture, and John has put up the new version of it, or what I would hope to be the new version. We have the opportunity to increase parking, because if you increase the size of the dog park, which is already intended, you're going to have more people there. Additionally, by spacing the new track, the new run to the south of the green space, we can use that center space in the future for any number of purposes. If we want to put playground equipment, if we want to put pavilions, barbecue pits, things of that nature, in addition to the existing gazebo and what's already proposed as a pier that could be used for fishing or for using, you know, motorized boats, like hobby boats. I just, I would request the board to, to kind of give this park, this dog park, Crowder Park, the kind of, the honor that it deserves since it's going to service potentially thousands of residents, not just those in the Cortina and Renaissance Commons, but as someone who lives within walking distance and frequents that area, individuals who live in Sky Lake, who live in the two islands to the south of Boynton, Old Boynton Beach Boulevard, everybody in the community uses this green space, the dog park, and once it's, it's maximized in terms of what it can offer, I think it'll become a true focal point for, for the western side of the city and, you know, for District One in this particular area. So I've talked enough to it. I think John might be able to speak a little bit, but I'm excited at the possibility of trying to make this more than just a tiny dog park and make it a, you know, a true park for the, for the western population of the city.
For the record, John Markey, 2300 Glazer Road, Boca Raton, Florida. The sketch that we're looking at, I apologize for it being very conceptual in nature, but this has been a fairly fast process. We had originally proposed as part of this site plan to add $500,000 worth of improvements to the dog park, because as Commissioner Katz said, it was really woefully inadequate. We learned very quickly that it was seeing so much use and getting so much wear that we needed to do something. Hence, we decided that it was time for us to chip in and spend some money to improve the park. So what is in the packet today is not quite this extensive. I was privileged to sit down with Commissioner Katz, Wally Majors, Park Director, and of course, Adam Mack, Director of Development. And this is, what you see here is a collaborative effort of us conceptualizing what the dog park could be beyond the money that we were willing to spend. So we added a whole nother larger dog enclosure. We added shade structures, benches, and there's an entirely new section of parking and open space. And it's really utilizing the entire area of the dog park at this point, which was really the impetus from Commissioner Katz. He wanted to see that done, make the best use of all of the dog park. Because as you see it now, it's got unused space. So we're happy to be a part of this. And as I said, we're, we're chipping in the $500,000. There's probably some additional monies that are needed here. We haven't priced this because it is conceptual, but we're very, very excited to be part of improving the dog park.
Yes. Commissioner McCray?
Thank you. He said pavilions. Who will pay for the pavilions that will go into that?
I am, Commissioner.
Are you going to pay for them?
Yes, I am.
Don't be scared to say it. That's what I like to hear. That's what I like to hear.
Commissioner Cassello?
$500,000 buys a lot of pavilions.
Good.
Markey, I'd just like to say that when I brought the idea of dog park way back when, and you took that idea and you did what you did with it, but I commend you for your commitment for half a million dollars to improve it. I think it'll be great, and I think as what Commissioner Katz has alluded to, I'd be willing to go along with that conception of those park impact fees helping to maintain that. I think it's going to be a great amenity here in Boyton. It'd probably be the only one, other than, it'd be the only one in Boyton, really, that'll be, a lot of us will be enjoying, let's put it that simply. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I'm going to open it up to a public audience. If anyone from the public that would like to speak, please come up to the podium to your right. If you haven't sworn in, please, please let the attorney know so he can swear you in and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Guy Borg, 501 Northwest 11th Street. I've lived in Boyton since 1974. I grew up in Gulfview Harbor. I currently live in Sky Lake, currently the president of the Homeowners Association. You know, we see, when we drive down Renaissance Boulevard, we see Compton Place with leasing signs, we see Santorini with leasing signs, we see Mount Verde with leasing signs, and now the district with leasing signs, not including Renaissance Commons, which is owned in most part by homeowners that rent these apartments out. As homeowners, we don't see our value increasing with what's proposed. We see a decrease. We see more apartments, more transient people, people that aren't going to invest in, homeowners that may change the look of their house, upgrade their house. We're talking about renters again. This whole corridor is all renters, and we don't see the value as homeowners. We don't see it. We appreciate the way they've designed it to, you know, transition towards the middle, but again, you know, it's putting 800 possible more cars on Old Boyton Road. We can't get out of our community during rush hour. 115 homes times two cars each is 230. They keep on saying it's less, but I don't see where it's less. I see 800 parking spaces more plying the roads that we all do. That's what I had to say, and I think I speak for all the people in our community that would rather see a single-family home go up there. I mean, it makes more sense. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? Yep.
Wangibis, I live in Sky Lake also. Excuse me. 1001 Northwest 10th Court, Boyton Beach. I agree with everything he said. I would prefer the single-family homes, and I improve the dog park and make it a big park. I think that would be much better. I mean, the traffic is really bad already. Crime in the Renaissance Commons and that area over there is bad. There's drug rehabs over there, there's people, you know, out there near the drug rehabs, selling drugs, there's overdoses. I mean, you know, I feel like if there's more apartments and condos, maybe we're going to have the same thing there, too. And like I say, the traffic is awful, there's accidents near there all the time, and I just, I would hope you would vote no. Our neighborhoods are great there, Sky Lake's a great neighborhood. All the other neighborhoods are single-family homes, you know, we take care of our homes, and I'm just not for it. So I hope you reconsider that. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Mary Huer McGary, a resident of Sky Lake, 1005 Northwest 10th Street. I want to ask the commission, have you considered the impact on our city services, such as our fire rescue, our police departments? We already enjoy a four-to-five-minute response time to our emergency needs. Have we considered staffing extra, building an extra fire station, hiring extra EMTs, firefighters, paramedics to work? How about our police services? We have too much traffic on our roadways right now. It's very difficult to get out onto Old Boyton Road from where we live. I can't imagine having this much more traffic in our area and the utilization of services. Where will these children go to school? This is a large population that we're adding. I hope you consider that.
Wangibis, 1001 Northwest 10th Court in Sky Lake. There's a big difference between single-family homes and apartments. I was a mail carrier of 32 years, just retired, thank God. The only place I've ever been assaulted was in apartments, twice. It's a great, great neighborhood we have in Sky Lake and the whole neighborhood around there. I mean, I walk, I walk through the new, what you did, the development along the canal, beautiful. I take my dog there all the time. I just know between the single-family homes, apartments, a big difference. You talk about the children that'll be living there, the teenagers, apartments, when I deliver to apartments, it's cars broken into, because, you know, parents aren't there. Single-family homes, you take care of your home, your children respect the home that they live in. We all moved to Sky Lake because we looked all over Boyton Beach, we came to live here. And the single-family neighborhood is beautiful. But since Motorola left, you built all these tremendous buildings over there. You all know what's, from Motorola to what it is now. And we've endured quite a bit of change over there in Sky Lake. I would really, really prefer single-family homes over on the other side of the canal over there, to keep it a single-family along Old Boyton Road, going all the way up to Tark, okay? And talking about the traffic coming out of there, it is very dangerous coming up Old Boyton Road, especially if you want to take a left-hand turn, you just can't do it. I mean, most time I take a right-hand turn and make a U-turn to come back down, to come down to, to get out to 95. You did put another traffic light at the Commons coming out, which is fine. I'm not saying put another traffic light at Boyton at Sky Lake, but it may be a good idea to do that if you can go this way, because that will slow down the traffic when people are trying to beat, going up Old Boyton Road instead of going up Boyton Beach Boulevard to come back down Congress. You know, they come around that corner flying, it's a 35-mile zone, I believe, there, and if you want to sit out there for a half hour, you're going to say, nobody's going 35 miles an hour there. So if it's twice in a matter, single-family homes is much preferred, and I think a better way to go for this city. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. I'm Kim Black, and I've written to a couple of the Commissioners here. I live at 973 Northwest 11th Street in Sky Lake. I'm a licensed real estate broker. I'm also a director of property management for a major commercial real estate company. I manage a couple buildings that are in Boyton Beach. That said, I understand that a developer is not going to make it trying to build single-family homes on that parcel. I understand that this is the reason for having made the changes that they're trying to make. I echo all the sentiments of those before me, and I can tell you that we were late today getting here because we could not get out of Sky Lake, and we are not in season. It was worse then. So I would ask that when you're considering this, that perhaps you take a break from approving it without just taking time to come over to our area and see what's happening with the traffic today, just as it is. I don't know what has happened that's increased it so exponentially, but it is there, without building another single solitary thing. And that brings to mind the fact that we're going to have more maintenance on the roads, et cetera. So I just wanted you to at least try to think about checking that out before you do it, because I think it's going to come back to haunt you. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lynn Myers. I'm another resident of Sky Lake. I live at 1002 Northwest 10th Court. I'm an original resident of Sky Lake. I moved in when it was built in 1986. I enjoyed it because it was kind of rural back then. I've watched the building go up. I am strongly opposed to the apartments. We have the Renaissance Commons that's been built, you've got the district apartments, you've got tons of apartments up in, off of Gateway, the Quantum Place. You've also got apartments that are being built in East Boyton, all a lot like behind Banana Boat, all that area, then I think on the corner of Ocean and Federal, more apartments. I don't think we need any more apartments. I think we need single-family homes, and especially along the canal to go along with the homes that are on the east side of the canal. Homes along the west side, as originally proposed, should be kept. And I also echo the sentiments of Mary, previously spoke before me, the impact that this, that these extra apartments are going to have on first responders, you know, police, fire, all that. That's, you know, when you're adding that many apartments, and who knows? I mean, you could have a two-bedroom apartment, you could have five, six people living in that. That's, multiply that by the amount of apartments they're proposing, it's insane. And also, and I only work at Gateway and Congress, so my shortcut drive to work is on Renaissance Commons Boulevard. I could never get out of there during season until they put the light on, you know, the traffic light at Old Boyton and Renaissance. And now to add these apartments, the impact that the traffic is going to have is just going to be insane. And also, Old Boyton Road, the speed limit is only 30 miles an hour, and if you would just spend even an hour at Sky Lake and watch the traffic fly down Old Boyton Road, they're doing 40, 50 miles an hour. Add these apartments to it, and you're just getting, Old Boyton Road is going to look like 95. It's just, it's, the impact is just too great to add all these apartments. And I just believe that it should go back to the single-family homes the way it was. And also, the developer saying the four-story apartments will be in the middle, I don't believe that when you, on the fourth-floor apartment, you're going to be able to look into the Sky Lake homes. I don't believe the landscaping in that townhome is going to obscure your vision. They're going to be seeing stuff. Just no. That proposed development is just wrong. Go back to the single-family homes, please. Thank you.
I live in Renaissance Commons, and I'm also a real estate agent. And I'm here because first, it was going to be single-family homes, and I was all for it, yes. I agree with everything he said. The need for more rentals is, you know, is not even needed anymore. It's condos, townhouses, condos, townhouses, there's no more single-family home. Everyone have to move out of Boyton to find single-family homes now. As far as crime, though, in Renaissance Commons, I really disagree with that. But the good thing about it also is more traffic in the area gives more money to the local businesses. I mean, that's what I think. But I think the single-family homes are a better choice. That's it.
So, you know, I was, so what ended up happening is, is that when Alta came in and asked for a major site plan modification, they didn't have to change the master plan, because they were reducing it from, I think, the 630 condos to the 300. And so, you know, I was still hoping that we were going to get the single-family homes. You know, after closer look, it's impossible from the get-go. So, I'm going to, you're going to wait till I'm finished speaking, though. And so with that, you know, I was looking at the size of the single-family lots. They're less than a tenth of an acre, which is about 4,000 square feet. There's no way you can put a home on 4,000 square feet and make it feasible in today's market, maybe on the highest in 2006. But, you know, I was looking at, right across from Town Square, you know, they are putting in, you know, what is it? It's going to cost around $200,000 just to put in a home that's on a fifth, I guess, a third, a sixth of an acre. And they, you know, they can't put that in this area. What the developer is saying with the 55 townhomes along the canal is actually less density than what is currently planned with all the single-family lots lining that road, because there was going to be a little bit more than 55 of the single-family homes. As for the apartments and the traffic, you know, the fact is, is that the perception that traffic engineers use to determine how much traffic a apartment generates compared to a single-family home, it is less. And so we don't get to use the reality effect that, of course, it's more than the current nothing or cows. And they say, well, because there's a single-family home, you're likely to have two-plus drivers versus a condo or apartment that is likely to have one-plus driver. And so they use, you know, actuarially evidence to create the perception that there's going to be less traffic. You know, I've been driving down Old Boyton Road a lot, and, you know, I understand that it is, you know, people drive it, and it is very difficult to get out of Sky Lake. I can understand that. And that is something that we are going to have to look at, because, you know, do we, you know, you have, I saw that you have three entrances and exits, and there's no lights for any of them. So it's almost in the sense, I don't know if it's a, we'll have to ask staff if it's a county road or a city road, where we are going to either be able to do something to get a light there for one of those entrances or exits, because I know with Old Boyton Road and Boyton Beach Boulevard is our second-highest red light-running intersection, because people need to make that light. And so it's talking with the county engineers to say that, hey, we need this light to be longer, because there's so many people that are leaving this area in the morning to go along with Boyton Beach Boulevard. The problem is, is that the developer only needs to provide competent, substantial evidence that this is okay, because it is less than the total density of the master plan. You know, if they are asking for 1,121, it would be a different type of legal standard for us to need to approve it. Because it is still less than the original one that was approved in 2005, we are not on the same footing, whether it's permitted or conditional. This is almost a permitted use, because it is less density than the original master plan. You know, it's, you know, as for what people are saying about the crime, I don't know if the developer is having a gate there or not, but that is something that will probably, most likely. The fact is, is that it's starting off rental with the hope that it will be a homeownership aspect of it. But with the rental, you know, it's up to that owner, because they're going to have that much competition surrounding them. So unless they have something new and better, that nobody's going to be living there, and it's going to go into that distressed project, because that's how the current developer got it, is that the original developer in 2005 didn't get it built, and that's the reason why in 2018, we're talking about the last phase and not, you know, the traffic that it generated. You know, it's, you know, they're doing whatever they can to help alleviate it. I don't know if the new light at Renaissance Commons Boulevard has helped at all, because, you know, you would think it would help a little bit, because people are stopping for that light. But, you know, you have traffic coming from Boyton Beach Boulevard, and you don't necessarily know. You know, it's, you know, it's kind of like we'll have to work together, because we don't really have the wherewithal to say no, because it's within their right to ask for less density. And that's kind of where we're at right now. And that's kind of where, you know, I'm saying is, is that, you know, the developer has been with the city of Boyton Beach for as long as I've been mayor. We see that they built the district, and, you know, they plan on being a good neighbor with the master developer agreement paying for the park. And so the question is, is that do you want to add additional to the park besides the dog park? Because I know Sky Lake has the canal, the freshwater landing, and another park as well. And so, you know, this is adding a dog park. There is no single-family home competition, so if anybody wants a single-family home, your homes are it. And so that should increase the value. As for the site, you know, I believe the developer, they, you know, it's a study where if they're only 45 feet high and they're 400 feet away, and there's a 25-foot building, you know, 30, you know, 50 feet away, it's unlikely they'll be able to see in the backyard. And, you know, if you need more landscaping, they'll, you know, they'll be happy to help with the landscaping. And that's the situation that we're in right now, is that, you know, we don't want to get the city into trouble with a lawsuit. And that's kind of where they're asking for less density, the perception of traffic And that's kind of where they're asking for less density, the, the perception of traffic's going to be lower is, you know, is founded in engineering, which I am not. And that's kind of where, you know, I am for the project because of what it's going to do for Boynton Beach with the tax base, with the different customers, with all the restaurants and retail stores that we're having. This will hopefully make a better Boynton Beach. So, I know, I forgot your name, but you said you had an extra comment if you'd like to say. All right, thank you. Mr. Casello?
Yeah. Ever since I've been sitting up here, the, there's always been a issue about the speed on Old Boynton Road. It may be that the, we should get those patrols back out there and monitor that a little more closely and help that. Also, you alluded to a little bit, Mayor, about the feasibility, and I, and I don't know, I'm not a traffic engineer, of maybe putting another traffic light in down near the, their development to help them get in and out of it.
I mean, can we ask if that's a city or a county road?
Yes, I think it's county.
It's a county road.
It's county.
All right.
I, I know how hard it was to get the one at, the one, the new one that's been put in. I can only imagine how hard it would be to get a second one put in.
Yeah, the county has specific warrant criteria that they'd have to meet before they would put it in. So we could talk to them, their study would probably need to be done, and then they would look at it.
Can we have that conversation? I think that'd be good.
Sure.
The other thing, one of the previous speakers, she was concerned about the fire and police. All these plans that go through the process here are always looked at by our public safety, by the police and fire. They make comments, they make suggestions on it. And they don't really have an issue with this particular project here. So those, those issues that you brought up have been addressed, have been looked at, and they don't seem to be a problem with the, the current leaders.
Yes, Vice Mayor?
Yes, so I would echo Commissioner Casello's sentiments about having our police presence increase in the Old Boynton area because I can concur with that. There is a lot of high speed, speeding going on, on down there. And I used to remember that that used to be a nice spot for ticketing individuals, and maybe we should go back to that. In addition, I'll, I'll ask the developer or Bonnie to come up and answer a question, a couple of questions. First, are these units being designed with the intention that with the change in the market, they could be converted to condos?
Yes.
Or homeownership properties?
Pretty much everything that I've been presenting in the last decade has been that. Right now, the intent is that they will be rentals. But they're, they're easily convertible in the future, should the market change. And certainly, the owner of the property, overall owner of the property, will have that as an option, should the market support that.
And, and in the interim, while it's a residential complex, it's the developer that will maintain the property and maintain its appearance and its visibility within the community, correct?
That's correct. In, in fact, what a number of municipalities find is that it is often easier to enforce, to enforce their code requirements with one large owner, such as the one that will be here, because they're a big company, you know, and they don't want to lose their asset. Whereas when you have a condominium, you have multiple, multiple property owners in there who individually could have the code problem. And it becomes more of a challenge from a enforcement perspective. So typically, one large property and one large property owner is easier to deal with than 300 of them.
Lastly, I'll ask this to the developer. What is your commitment to working with our local workforce?
Well, I have asked that question after the last applicant. I was prepared, and his response was the same as theirs. They certainly are happy and enthusiastic about going to a local trade pool versus having to, to, to look for subs, et cetera, from outside the city limits. So they'll be happy to work with your, yes, the wonderful gentleman in the bowtie, in finding qualified and competent contractors and subcontractors to help build this project.
I, I did have a question. If you can go back to the picture with the sketch drawing of the dog park, I had a question about something I saw.
Oh, sure.
On the image.
And by the way, that is a very, very quick conceptual one that was done. Bless John, he did it in about a day. There you go.
I'm curious, are those fish?
Yes. What kind of fish are those?
Those are fish?
What kind of fish?
Yes, those are really big fish. No, those are, those are actually draft dots that are securing the, the vellum paper over top of the, the old plan. But we can call them fish.
Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner McCray, followed by Commissioner Casello.
Thank you. My comment is, in regards to a police sitting out on Old Boynton Road, I am not in favor of that. The reason I'm not in favor of that is because we can utilize them more in the cities where they need to be. Once they have placed out there, we know just as good when a sting is out there, when a police officer is out there, and it's not going to curtail anything. I'm just saying, we need to utilize our services where they're needed. And I'm just saying, you know, for somebody to sit up here and say, you know, let's place more officers out on one road, that's ludicrous for me. Thank you.
Yes.
I, I would just say that if we identify an area that, that people are actually speeding and endangering pedestrians and other motorists, I think that has to be addressed. And if that means putting more police out in that area, particular types, particular times of days, then that's what we need to do. So I respectfully disagree with that.
I would agree with Commissioner Casello. That's why our police force exists.
Mayor, let me chime in. Thank you.
Yes, okay.
Okay, I've been sitting up here longer than any of you all, so let me explain why I'm saying what I'm saying, is that when we got ready to put the Haitian church out on Old Boynton Road, the same group of people that came tonight saying about the traffic, the traffic, the traffic, they're here tonight, and I'm just saying, that is not an issue. They just wanted to be like a free road where nothing is happening, and times have changed. We have to change with the times.
All right. Commissioner Katz?
Spirit of discussion about an ancillary topic to the, to the actual plan, so I'm going to steer it, steer it back and not weigh in because...
Okay, thank you.
There's no reason to pick a side right now. I, I sympathize and I agree that in a perfect world, there would be single-family detached homes. I live in a townhouse in Renaissance Commons. I can attest that the crime is not bad. We have sober homes, but that's something that we certainly can't prohibit under federal guidelines. What I can say is that I'm, I'm pretty confident that apartment complexes never would allow sober homes because they have different guidelines and rules, whereas, you know, an ownership opportunity lends itself to people who want to take advantage of, of their house or their townhouse to, to put them in. So I don't, I don't see the crime or the sober home concern cropping up. It's, it's just that the, the market does not bear the ability to price the single-family detached homes in this area. And, and we've had this discussion before up here, and legal can, can weigh in, that with regards to trying to dictate ownership versus rental properties, we simply have no legal ability to do that. If, if you can kind of confirm, because this came up when, when the adjacent property, the Alta property that downgraded their height and density from condos to a smaller quantity of apartments, that, that question came up about, you know, it's going from ownership condos to rental apartments. Can we deny them that switch? And I believe at the time, it was made clear that there's no precedent for dictating the, the ownership versus rental status of a...
That's correct. Our code does not regulate the type of ownership.
So, you know, as much as I agree, I'd like to see more ownership opportunity. I look forward to the market at some point turning a corner and being able to sell off those townhouses and ultimately, the apartments in time. But, but this is what the market bears right now, and this, it's what's legally permissible under current land use and zoning for the area. I, I think that the fact that there's a canal between the adjacent community provides as, as strong a buffer as, as possible by literally making it impossible for people from this area to, you know, to just walk over, suppose they could walk over to Old Boynton. But again, the point is, I think that it, the perception is, is it changes the community. It certainly will lead to more cars because right now, it's an empty lot. But I just, you know, from speaking to people in the adjacent communities on Old Boynton, the effect is more when you leave the community and end up on Old Boynton than the actual community itself, from what I've been told. I don't know if, you know, if owning a single-family unit in Venetian or Treasure Island or Sky Lake is somehow less quality because across the canal, there's, there's a managed rental community. So, again, I sympathize. I wish that we could put single-family detached units there. I would, I would have been interested. After living in a three-story townhouse for the past decade, I've grown quite tired of that, walking up and downstairs every five minutes if I forget my keys. I would have loved to be able to move and stay in the community, but it just doesn't present itself. If I want to move to a single-family unit, I can move to Sky Lake, which is something that I certainly would entertain in the future. It's not in my current district, so that's not a plan anytime soon, but those, those borders don't fit, fit my needs. But it's just, it's, it's a sound project. I think if you look at the commercial business in Renaissance and running along what's going to be now Cortina, you know, a number of those businesses have been doing well since their, their inception and since they've taken occupancy some 10 years ago. But also, a number of the smaller commercial spaces have not been able to sustain themselves by adding this population and the population that's already been added in Renaissance by way of Santorini and Compton Place. You know, this is sustaining the economic viability of the area, which has been, been quite fruitful so far. It's just an enhancement of it. I, you know, again, I, I sympathize that we can't do exactly what might have been promised, but I think that going back to the original site plan, it was literally supposed to be hundreds of townhouses from the canal all the way to Old Boynton. So, you know, a lot has changed over the course of many site plan revisions, and this is just another one dictated by the market.
Vice Mayor?
I'm, I'm ready to vote. I just wanted to make sure we, we don't forget about the suggestion of Commissioner Katz about possibly putting in the impact fees for the park. So I'd like, I guess, some more feedback from staff in terms of the numbers and what that would look like, and, and maybe that's something we could bring up as an agenda item in the future. But that's something I don't want us to forget.
I guess I forgot my question regarding, is there a gate? No? Okay, because, and, but there will be some sort of security? Yeah.
Corrected, forgive me, it is going to be gated.
Okay, thank you. All right. So, so we have a motion?
So moved. Where would you have it? Three separate agenda items to deal with.
Okay, so we're going to move on item...
8B, 8C, and what you moved up to 6C.
So, so we're moving on the, approve the Boynton Village and Town Center Master Plan Modification 18-002. May I have a motion?
Yes. Question first. With regards to, to ensuring that, you know, pending the cost to the city, we move forward with the enhancements to the park, where would language have to be attached that that's something that we're looking into? Because the, the site plan is offered right now, doesn't have those upgrades because they're subject to our willingness to fund them. Is there anything that has to be put in there to say that that's something we're looking for, and if we fund it?
No, you have the public representation that would occur, and there'll be a follow-up item when the time comes.
Okay, thank you.
So I have a motion on item 18-002, or MPMD 18-002.
Second.
Who is the first? Uh, Casello? All right, all those in favor state so by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Approve Cortina 3, Major Site Plan Modification 18-003. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Approve the Cortina PUD Replat 3, Record Plaid Condition on the approval being the certification of the plat documents by Gary Dunmire. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to legal.
Ordinance 18-006, this was tabled.
Motion to remove A and B.
Okay. And we have a second. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
An ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending Article 3 of the Chapter 18 of the Boynton Beach Code of Ordinances entitled Municipal Police Officers Retirement Trust Fund, amending Section 18164 to provide for mutual consent regarding use of 185 money, amending Section 18169 to add normal retirement age definition for members who retire with the, with years of service-only retirement, to provide for payment of death benefits to a designated beneficiary in the event there is no spouse, and to add 10-year vesting for police officers hired on or after October 1, 2016, adding a new section, 18178, to add a rehire-after-retirement provision, providing for codification, conflict, severability, and an effective date. Just a reminder, this was tabled because there was a notice requirement to be sent to the state of Florida that information, those two letters are in your backup agenda and an actuarial report as well. And these are bargain-for benefits. So this is implementing conditions of the collective bargaining agreement in part that the commission has previously approved.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion from the board? Seeing none. Any discussion from the audience? Seeing none. May I have a roll call, please?
Casello?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Commissioner Katz?
Yep.
Commissioner McCray?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Romulus?
Yes.
The vote is five to zero.
Ordinance 18-007, an ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida.
Motion to retable that?
Nope. Staffs, thank you.
All right. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Item is tabled to June, first meeting in June. Proposed ordinance number R18-008.
An ordinance, an ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, deleting the current Chapter 9 Fire Protection and, Protection and Prevention in its entirety and creating a new Chapter 9 Fire Protection and Prevention, providing for repeal of laws and conflict, severability, codification, and an effective date. And I do need the commission to adopt an amendment to the effective date, to change that to July the 18th, 2018, to allow some fee issues to catch up with the ordinance.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion from the board? Seeing none. Any discussion from the audience? Seeing none. May I have a roll call, please?
Grant?
Here. Oh, yes.
Yeah, you're here. You're here.
Commissioner Katz?
Yes.
Commissioner McCray?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Romulus?
Yes.
And Commissioner Casello?
Yes.
Vote is five to zero.
All right. All right. Our next meeting together is our public input meeting on May 29th at 6:30. I'll ask the, the commission that if you have any items that you'd like staff to put on an agenda, you let them know because it is going to be noticed by, I guess, that Thursday or Friday beforehand.
Just a point of information, I see our future agenda items list is getting pretty long. I like to get them on the agenda, as many as we possibly can that are ready to go.
Most, most of them say June, so, so yeah.
Mayor, in your, your workshop, the budget meeting is at Intercoastal Park. You may just want to remind everybody, not, not here.
Yeah. All right. Commissioner Katz?
Yeah, just to, to clarify, the budget meeting is, I think, last year, and I was under the presumption this year, too, it's, it's a public input meeting. So you just mentioned an agenda and us putting items on it. I, I was under the impression that the entire agenda was public input. We weren't going to have a commission budget meeting until the summer.
Well, the, the point is, is that if I wanted to talk about the trolley system, I needed to have it publicly noticed as well. And so that's kind of the one, you know, one or two items that I'd like to bring up for the commission to discuss because it's in our comprehensive plan. And so if there's anything that you want to speak to the whole commission about what you would want also in, you know, because we are, you know, citizens of the city as well, and if we have our own input, what we would also would like to see in the, the budget, yes?
We just, I have no problem putting that on as a discussion item for a regular commission agenda, but I worry about...
Okay.
I worry about turning the public input meeting into a, a commission budget workshop.
Absolutely.
So I'd be more than happy to, to entertain, you know, a motion to put that on as a future agenda item and a discussion, whether it's next meeting or as soon as you...
Okay, yeah. No, I, I, thank you, Commissioner Katz. Yes, I'd like to, thank you for putting that motion for a future agenda item regarding a trolley system in Boynton Beach. Have a discussion on it, not just a, more of a user pay, not a free trolley. So thank you.
I guess while we're on the discussion of putting things in discussion in the future, I would also like to have, start talking more openly about a downtown police unit or a downtown district in order to increase our police presence within the downtown as we go forward with construction and then finishing up with creating a downtown. So that's something that I believe we need to start talking about and allocating funds for that in the future.
You talking about a physical structure or like a task force?
No, more like a task force, like police presence, either whether it's hiring extra police officers or having a specific unit for downtown as that project is built and then erected.
Gotcha.
Mayor, just point of information to the city manager, do we have a police substation in Renaissance? Is that manned?
It's not a substation, it's just some office space that we utilize, I think, for our crime, crime prevention folks kind of house or housed over there.
So we have people actually in it, using it?
Um, yeah, they come and go when they're, they're out meeting with homeowners and doing, you know, different, different developments. But, so it's not manned all the time, but they come and go and use the space.
Can we get a report back on how often that's being used and what we're paying for rent over there?
We don't pay any rent, and they're moving out. They've been asked to leave. Why are we moving out?
Just send that discussion.
That's that.
That's that.
All right.
And I know it's a little early, Lori, maybe this isn't necessarily ready to be on the record yet, but if there's an update on what we're working on in, with 500, is there any progress on that, or is that something not ready to be discussed publicly?
Oh, no, I mean, I've spoken briefly to Assistant Chief DeGiulio and Acting Chief Harris, and, yeah, they've offered to, for us to utilize some retail space there for, to have a presence in the downtown area. So we will definitely avail ourselves to that opportunity. We're actually, and this is off the cuff, so, no, I don't have a formal report, but crime, the, the crime prevention folks, we have some, possibly some records. We also want to use, possibly use volunteers to occupy that space and have a presence down there. So we're going to, we're going to take them up on it for certain. Just don't know exactly what yet.
Motion, Jen?
Yep, second. All right.